What I'm trying to show is just like cool people here in Kansas City, you know what I mean? Like if you've seen my podcast, like it's just a wide array of people. I don't have a target.
A few people that were on it.
Yeah, yeah. So I'm just interested and curious in everybody's lives, man, you know? And I feel like honestly, I think the biggest thing that doing this has showed me, we all are more alike than what we think, you know what I mean? Like, I think we divide ourselves a lot, you know?
I think it's intentional.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
I do.
Yeah.
I think we're intentionally being divided.
Do you think that's a like foreign intentional or do you think that's actually domestic?
Are we recording right now?
Yeah, we're recording.
So it's interesting you bring that up because uh, what was it? I just saw something the other day that may fact check me on this. I don't know if it's real or not, but uh, somebody the other day was saying like the top two financiers of like the LGBTQ agenda are Chinese billionaires.
Really?
And they don't promote it in China, only the United States. So whether that's real or not, I have no idea.
I've heard a lot of stuff, you know, from different sources saying that China has been manipulating a lot of things over here. And I don't know if it's only China, maybe other countries as well, but and I can't say that we're innocent, you know, I'm sure we're dabbling a lot in other countries as well, but.
Absolutely. And then the other creepy thing I was thinking about recently is like algorithms are dangerous because you end up with uh, you get into like a feedback loop where if you consistently on social media, watch certain videos, like certain videos, then they'll feed you stuff that they think that you like. And so you end up with like this divergent view set where the people on, you know, the right and the people on the left get stuck in this like yeah, echo echo chamber where you just see what they think you, they want you to see. They don't necessarily challenge your opinion. And uh, I'm actually not on the right or the left. I'm very independent. So I try to follow people on both sides.
When you ran for city council, did you run as an independent or would you run as?
So on the local level, it's uh, you don't declare.
Oh, really?
Yeah, you don't have to be um, any party. Um, I actually had people trying to give me money.
Really?
And I, I didn't, I declined all of it uh, because I knew.
How many people don't decline?
You know, on the local level, um, I think you actually have to, I've never actually looked it up.
Yeah.
But you have to declare it. You have to fill out like, yeah, if you take money from people, you have to have a treasure. You have to declare who gave you money.
Unless it's for charity, right?
So I've never looked it up, but there is some type of paper trail involved. But the reason I decline money is uh, cause then you're beholden to that person. They give you money, then you owe them something.
I scratch your back, you scratch mine. Yeah.
And I'm not rich by any means, but um, you know, I kinda wanted to be like Donald Trump level where, you know, it's like, I have my own money. I don't need your money. I'm gonna make my, you know, I'm gonna do what I think is best.
Right.
And uh, I didn't want people to feel like they had any type of control over me. So I declined all the money. I still have people actually, business owners calling me, asking me to run for uh, various offices and things like that. And uh, I've never taken a dollar from anybody. I literally was just a dude walking around with my cellphone, shooting videos, knocking on doors, talking to people.
When did you run?
I actually ran.
It was quite a while ago, wasn't it?
I ran uh, one time many years ago and lost. The first time I ran, I lost.
Okay.
Um, and that's a whole, that's a whole nother story. That was, that was intense. So basically like I live, I live in North Kansas City. I still do. I always have every property I've owned was in North Kansas City.
Is that where you grew up?
I actually grew up in Briar Cliff, but I did go to North Kansas City High School. So I consider it my home. Like technically speaking, I grew up in Kansas City, Missouri, up the hill in Briar Cliff. But even as a child, my friends lived in North Kansas City. I went to, they went to, kids in North Kansas City go to Briar Cliff Elementary School, which is the same elementary school I went to. Uh, so, so technically now, I'm not from North Kansas City, but I'm as an adult, I've always lived there.
You reside there for a while.
And uh, so I, I just, I noticed as a resident, things going the direction that I didn't like. And so I'm one of those people that's very proactive. So if, if something, if I don't like something, I'm either gonna do something about it or leave. Those are your two options, basically. Either change it or get the fuck out of here.
Yeah.
Cause these people that complain about their job or about where they live or about their spouse or about whatever, that drives me fucking crazy when you have somebody that just, they're stuck in some type of situation and instead of changing their situation, they just sit around and bitch and moan about it. So I saw things going the, the wrong direction and I'm like, fuck this. This is my town. I'm gonna fix it. And so I stood up, started fighting back against these people. And uh, I mean, I had some crazy shit happen to me like the first time I ran for office. Like here's a true story. This is insane. The day they like open up the uh, registration to be on the ballot and you go to city hall, they have, they literally were like, the doors open at whatever time, eight AM or nine AM. And at that point in time, you went in, you walked in the building, there was like a signup sheet with the city clerk. And you write down, you know, I'm Wes Graves. I live in Ward. At that time I lived in Ward, what was it? Three, I believe. Uh, so anyways, at that time, they put you on the ballot in the order that you sign up. And it sounds stupid. I have a political science degree and that, so I studied politics and it sounds stupid, but the, there's an advantage to being listed first on the ballot. A lot of people just literally fill in the first circle. And I would, the guy I was gonna run against was the incumbent. He'd already been elected multiple terms. And so I was ta- trying to take down somebody that everyone in the neighborhood knew and had already elected multiple times. So I was like, I need every advantage I can get. So I got there 20 or 30 minutes before the door opened, freezing cold that day. It was like 20 degrees outside. So I show up freezing my ass off. No one's there, right? And I actually walked from my house. North Town's a small neighborhood, so I had no car, just walked down there. So I'm sitting there in front of this locked door, waiting for the door to open. The guy that I'm there to run against walks up behind me and he didn't know me at the time. And he goes, hey, man, you know, you know, who are you? And I said, hey, man, I'm, I'm Wes Graves. And uh, he goes, what are you doing here? And I said, I'm signing up to run for city council. And he's like, oh, you live uh, so there's another guy named Wes Rogers, who's also a polit- he was in politics and he's still a uh, I think Wes is actually currently a state representative. He's a Democrat. But anyways, this guy shows up, he thinks I'm that Wes. So he's like, oh, you live in, you know, this other ward. And I'm like, no, man, I'm in your ward. And he's like, you're running against me? And I'm like, yeah. So when I say that, the dude pushes me.
Yeah.
What? Yeah. Gets in, gets in between literally like sandwiches, like shimmies in between me and the door. And at that point, I've lost it and was like, this is not fucking happening, dude. Like I was here first. You're not in front of me. I don't know what the fuck you're, like I was cussing and yelling at him and stuff. So eventually an employee opens the door and was like, what the fuck is going on out here? And I'm like, this dude just pushed me, is cutting in line. I'm here to sign up for the city council event, blah, blah, blah. So we go inside and this dude literally, he walks in, we walk into like the common area, like the lobby. He's a current city council guy at the time. So he has keys to all the back office doors. He goes in, runs in, unlocks his back door, goes into the back room to talk to the clerk. Tells her what's happening, says I'm a liar, says that he was there first and I'm a liar and all this shit. So then we go to sign the, the form and he's already signed it. I'm like, I'm not signing below him. I was here first. So I ended up throwing a fit, crossed his name out, all this stuff, went home. I emailed like the city attorney, the current mayor, all these people and was like, you guys, there's cameras all over the building. Like you need to review the camera and look at what just happened. And so I got an email back that was like, yeah, you're right. You were here for.
I thought they were gonna be like, uh, they were temporarily shut off.
And I lost the election. He beat me.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Even after all that?
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah. So he, so he publicly, he smeared me, said I'm a liar, that I'm a hothead, that I tried to fight him, that the, that the police had to intervene, which there was no police intervention.
Yeah, but after reviewing the cameras, they didn't say anything?
No.
Didn't do anything?
No.
Wow.
There's been, dude, I've seen, I mean, that's like a very minor story. I've seen stuff just from the lowest level of local government. Levels of corruption and deception that are very black pill, like demoralizing, like it's, it's brutal.
And from what I've heard is that at the local level, it's actually a lot more, um, I guess I would say regulated or monitored a lot better than it would be federally. So if there's a lot of corruption going on locally, imagine at the federal level.
I can't, yeah, I can't even imagine. I, I, yeah, I've thought about that. And I mean.
But, but what, I mean, what? So you said you're a man of action, right? If something's going on, at least in your town locally, you wanna stand up and you wanna fight against it to make it right. And I admire that. I at one point was one of those guys that was just bitter, upset, pissed off, especially during all the COVID times. I think that's what really set me off and a lot of people off. Just a blatant disregard for the everyday peoples, uh, giving them uh, free will, just choices, you know, for, for, to make in their own life, whether it be health wise, work wise, whatever it is. And, but now I've seen, and after talking to a lot of people, that I think you should be active and try to get involved in your city more, especially at a local level. I think you make more of a difference. My problem is, is that I feel like they make everything so difficult. Like it's already difficult enough right now in times with work. Everybody's working one to two jobs. Fifty, sixty hours a week, a lot of people, you know? And then to come home and have to try to research and figure out what the hell is going on to be able to vote accurately, to be able to understand all these laws and everything they're trying to pass. I just don't see it being something that everyone is capable of doing, you know? If you could explain like to me, like how does one go about, you know, understanding all this to be, to get involved? Like what should they do?
My perspective has actually like changed tremendously since all this. Um.
Oh, so you're, you think it's more failed? Like there's, there's nothing we can do?
Unfortunately, I've gotten to the point now where I've got a for sale sign in my yard right now, actually.
Yeah.
My house is getting listed a week from today, in fact.
But anywhere you go is gonna be the same problem, right?
No.
No?
No. I think that people are better served doing, so as a, I'm a real estate agent. I cannot, what do they, what do they call it? Uh, I can't tell people where they should buy a house or direct them into certain areas. But I think that people need to do their own research and find an area where you fit in. Because the area that I'm in now currently, I am by far the minority. And I don't mean like racially or whatever. I mean, just my way of thinking. I became a minority. And when you're in that situation, if, if you live in an area where the mayor hates you and seven eighths of the city council disagrees with you, get the fuck out of there.
Right.
Leave. Cause I tried to fight against it and had people threatening to kill me. I have people leaving fake business reviews on my business, trying to shut my business down.
Spear business.
Just you name it. It's fucking miserable. It's not worth it. Like, but that being said, I do not regret what I did.
Yeah.
Because if I would have just left what I consider my home and let them just take it over with no fight, then for the rest of my life, I would have had this what if, what if scenario in my head playing out and would have always wondered, but uh, I mean, I did, I fought my ass off. Uh, you mentioned COVID. Dude, I voted no on every mask order and was outvoted seven to one every single time.
That's insane.
Yeah. Um, but if you're asking what you can do, you know what does make a difference, honestly?
What?
Politicians are very cowardly. They do not like people yelling at them, especially publicly. If you send a nasty email, they can click delete. They don't give a shit.
Right.
If you go, if there's something that you really are passionate about and youth, and you live in an area where, I'm trying to think of how to explain this. Okay. If you think you can actually make a difference, go to a council meeting and they have public comments. Those are important.
Well, the problem is those council meetings are on a Monday.
Correct.
What, what time is the North Kansas City Council meetings? Mondays at?
I think it's Tu- it's Tuesdays and they changed the time actually. Uh, I don't know, six o'clock or seven o'clock or something like that, something like that. It's in the evening.
That's not too bad, but um.
Usually public comments are right in the beginning too, to where you can literally, you show up, make a comment and I mean, you can be in and out in 10 minutes.
So I noticed, so I watched, this is the first time I've ever watched one before. Like I said, I got a buddy of mine who has been talking to me, telling me, hey, man, I think you should get involved more. You know, I understand that you're voicing your opinions, you know, and all this stuff. Maybe try getting involved and see how it's really like. So that's what I, I did. I, I watched one of them. I wasn't able to go to it, but I watched one. And I think the concerning part to me, and, and I can only judge it off of one. So you know, take my thought with a grain of salt. But what they spent their time discussing, out of that hour and a half, or however long it was, it was like an hour and a half, I think. I think they spent a majority of the time discussing YMCA memberships from North Kansas City residents. And this was after the people came up and did their, you know.
Public comments?
Yeah, public comments. I think one lady was upset because she didn't receive a text about the shooting that happened at the North Kansas City High School.
That happened in front of my house, by the way.
Yeah. And then, and we'll touch on that. And, and then this other guy was talking something about pit bulls.
Yep. They've got a pit bull in the neighborhood that's killing other people's dogs and they won't fucking do anything about it.
Really?
They told the people to keep the dog inside. That's all they did.
Yeah. And then you had, and then another one was like, uh, brought his daughter and was talking about, which I find weird, man, when guys bring their kids up there and, and they make them say a speech.
I'm not safe at school.
Yeah. Yeah. I think that's kinda odd, dude. So.
Yeah, okay. I got other words than odd, but yeah. I mean, yeah.
Hey, man, you say whatever you want on here, man.
Dude, I've had people. Oh, man. Yeah, it's dark, dude. I've had people come up after my kids.
Oh, really?
Yes. Yeah. Yeah. Like, yeah, it's creepy, dude.
Harassing them?
No, not harassing them, basically telling me how to be a parent.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Type of stuff where they try to like control your involvement with your kids.
Right.
Type of stuff.
I love those people that think they know more than you.
Dude, that really gets me heated. Yeah. I mean, you have a child. I mean, you know how it is. You wanna really fucking piss me off? Like fuck with my kids.
Yeah, dude. I mean, it's not right, man. You don't involve yourself in another family, you know, parenting, you know what I mean? Like it'd be one thing if you're a friend giving advice, but if you're just nobody and you're being malicious about it, come on now, you know?
For some reason, something happened. I don't know. It seems like around five years ago where nowadays people, I used to consider myself like a libertarian, like a live and let live person. I don't even think you can really be a libertarian in today's environment. Because people are trained now to where they're like, my way is the right way. If you don't agree with me, then you're a Nazi. I can kill you. You're a piece of shit essentially. So it used to be, you can live next door to somebody and live two completely separate lives and still be cool with each other. And that doesn't exist any longer.
Internet.
So I live in like a, a neighborhood that I used to like the fact that it was like considered a diverse community. It was like a melting pot.
Yeah.
Where you'd have like rich people, poor people, all different races, all different ages. There's elderly people, there's young families. And that used to be considered like cool, you know, have like a diverse environment. Now it's actually like dangerous to live in those environments because you're literally surrounded by people that hate each other. Like everyone is like ready to attack each other.
What do you think's causing that?
I think a lot of it is the algorithms. Like you touched on at the very beginning too. I mean, there's people even say it's foreign influence. I mean, I'm sure you've seen
Yeah.
That video that, you know, I, I'm an algorithm. I don't know if you're in the same algorithm as me, but like that Yuri Bezmenov video, the Russian KB, KGB agent. There's a video that's from the, I wanna say it's from the nineties. You've never seen the Yuri Bezmenov video? So there's an interview with this gentleman named Yuri Bezmenov and he's a KGB agent. And he was, and this was, I wanna say it was in the nineties, uh, was talking about how he's like, we can defeat the United States without using the military. Essentially you, you brainwash the population to attack each other.
Using like foreign intelligence?
Yeah. So I mean.
CIA type shit.
That's basically what's happening is people are, we're becoming uh, everyone's splintered off into little factions. And each little faction thinks that the other faction is, you know, scum and be like beneath human, like un, you know, like they could just kill them with no repercussions essentially.
Right.
Um, like this whole, there's like an anti racism movement where people look at everything in society and try to pick it apart as racist. Um, so when you're dealing with people like that, I'll give you an example. In North Kansas City, the high school was built, like the new school was built. Where'd you go to high school?
I went to North Kansas City and then I went to Oak Park.
Okay. So you're from, so when you, you went to North Town before it was renovated?
Twenty, two thousand and six, I think I went to North.
So you remember the, where the parking lot used to be where the students park?
Yeah, it was before the renovation. Yeah, yeah.
Like that's where the fieldhouse is.
Okay.
So we basically have like kids, students, they don't have enough parking. So they park in the neighborhood and I happen to live in front of the high school. So the street I live on is covered in, like on a school day.
Oh, yeah.
You can't park in the street. It's all students. And for somebody like me, no big deal. But there's like eighty year old ladies that live on the street and they'll go to the grocery store and come home and there's nowhere to park. You can't even unload your groceries. You have to park a block away.
Cause you guys don't have driveways?
I do. I have a two car garage, but a lot don't actually. So I went to the school. I was talking to the superintendent about this and the, the irony is I would, the, the city owns parking lots in that area, including like the parking lot at the library. And then I'm also friends with these people that run the Baptist church, like diagonal from the high school. So I went there to like offer, hey, let's work on a solution to this parking situation. And I literally came at him as like, I'm a North Town grad. I love North Town. I graduated in ninety-nine and it hurts me to hear my neighbors talking bad about the school. So I'm like, there's bad relations right now between the school and the residents that live around it. So let's work on a solution. You know what the guy told me?
What?
You're racist. The only reason that you care that these kids are parking on your street is because you don't like the color of their skin.
And this was who again?
The fucking superintendent of North Kansas City High School. You're actually, this is the first time I've ever said this publicly.
That's insane.
Luckily I had another councilman with me at this meeting.
He said this during the meeting. He didn't, not, not even off to the side during the meeting.
Yeah. And dude, he even like, and he's a big dude. He's actually like pretty, like he's way bigger. He's, I don't know, six, three, six, four, like big ass guy.
Who is?
The superintendent.
Okay.
He's retiring this year is why I actually feel comfortable even talking about this now. Cause when it happened, I was like, I don't need to be on the news for this shit.
Right.
But he even like power, you know, those guys will like power shake your hand like Trump does where they're like.
Try to squeak, yeah.
He did all that shit to me, like called me a racist.
Right.
And uh, so I was like, me and the other council guy walked out of there and we stood there and talked for thirty minutes outside, just like, that was insane. Like we were both just like in shock of like, this is wild.
The sad thing is, is the oversaturation of that word, dude. I feel like they're just throwing it out for everything now. I mean, God forbid you have an issue with anything related to a certain group or whatever it can be. It's not, it can't not even be racist. If it's just directed in the direction of somebody of a certain race, it's racist.
I don't know. Do you get that shit? Like, cause I'm a white dude. Like, so I get.
So my thing is, is you know, me, me looking predominantly white, but coming from a mixed home.
Yeah.
Of course I may not see it. Now, on the other hand, I do hear a lot of stuff. Not, I say a lot, not a lot. But I do hear racial comments and stuff like that, cause people don't know, you know, like I'll hear other white people say kind of racist things around, cause they're like, oh, he's just another white guy. You know, he's not gonna say anything. So I have heard that before. Not a lot, but I have. So racism still exists and I acknowledge that.
Oh, a hundred percent.
Now, do I think those people wanna go out and like lynch people or anything like that? No, I think they're more ignorant, just ignorant comments, you know? Uh, some of them may, I don't know. But on the other side too, of growing up in the minority community as well, and being around a lot of black or Mexican or, you know, people of other races, I have heard the same remarks on that, those sides as well.
Oh, a hundred percent.
So it's like, and I think that's what baffles my mind is that they like to demonize one specific group being Caucasian people so much, you know, and, and especially I think just from history, which none of us grew up during those times, you know, none of us are, um, none of us should be uh, getting the repercussions, you know, from those actions of those people. What happened was wrong. We should learn about it and continue to learn about it. So we don't commit the same things again. So we don't let history repeat itself. But no one should be held accountable for that, man, right now. You know, I mean, we, we all need to treat each other with respect, love, that's it. And stop trying to think like our shit don't stink, you know what I mean? Cause I, and that's what I'm seeing, man. Even like I said, even in my minority community, a lot of them will like to act as if just because they are from, from a specific race, they can't be racist. Yet I'm hearing stereotypical or quote unquote racist remarks from them.
I've got friends of every race and every, like they're all racist, like in some way, you know?
And, and, and is, is it jokes? I mean, cause to me, man, all, all my buddies, I've got buddies from all different races, man. We all fuck around with each other. If you, if anybody sits there in front of me and says, I've never said something racist in my life, I always roll my eyes. I'm like, get the fuck out of here. You've never made a joke. You've never fucked around with your buddies, like even buddies of another race, dude, I've got buddies. Dude, I've got buddies from all different races that go hard on it, say some crazy ass shit, some shit that probably get them fired, you know, from their job. But at the end of the day, it's all love. It's all funny. It's all jokes. You know what I mean?
I know some that are not jokes.
Yeah.
Well, I know some people that you know, the same people that are not jokes, that are like Hispanic dudes that are basically like La Raza types that are like, fuck white people. We're taking over the country. We're gonna have ten kids. Fuck you.
Yeah, like KKK of the other side, basically.
They're, yeah, they're like Mexican KKK guys essentially.
Yeah.
But like that superintendent, I fucking literally put my kids in private school after I talked to that guy.
Because of him?
Yeah. Cause I'm like, I'm not gonna leave my, I'm not gonna leave my kids in your school.
Yeah, but think about how many people can't, can't afford to do that. And they have to just put up with it.
Hey, important announcement, uh, they actually have, like my kids go to Catholic school right now where I'm moving. I'm gonna put them in public school, cause it's a better school district. But there's uh, the state of Missouri has income assistance. If, and it's like a high income threshold. If you make under a certain amount of money, the state will pay your kids tuition.
Really?
There's no excuse not to. Like if your kid is in a school that you don't like the school, I mean, hit me up and I will give you a link to a website. And even these private schools, um, I know it's for Catholic schools, but I'm not sure about the other ones. But there's a way that if you make under a certain amount of money. I mean, I'm married, so I think the threshold for a married couple, I mean, it's over a hundred thousand dollars. It was a hundred and five or a hundred and ten or something like that. If you make under that, your kid's free.
Really?
Yep. And what's even crazier is they lock you in. So once you qualify for it, you don't have to like reapply. So if your kid's in kindergarten and you get that scholarship money.
You're locked in for twelve.
And then twelve, three years later, all of a sudden you're balling out, making two hundred grand a year. Your, your kid's already locked in through high school. Yeah. Yep. You're not stuck. If you're in some shitty school district, yes. It's called, I think it's called the most scholars program. I could be wrong on that, but there's a program.
I feel like not that necessarily. I'm talking about taxes in general just being wasted, man. Why not just use that money to put into these public schools and just say, hey, keep all this shit out of the schools. Let's just teach these kids. That's it.
Good luck with that.
Let's just educate them.
Cause here's what happens. This happened to me. If you make that argument, you're homophobic.
Oh, really?
You're racist. You're, that's what they do.
Neutral grounds? Like I don't want.
They wanna teach your kid that white people are evil, you know, all this shit. And then if you object to it, oh, you're a white supremacist.
Yeah.
Like, no, I'm not. I just teach my kid math. So when my kid was going to public school, they were getting like straight A's. And meanwhile, you look at their handwriting and it, it looks like they're writing with their fucking feet.
Really?
Like they, they were doing shitty.
So what, so what have you seen differences? How long have they been in private school?
Two years.
What are the differences between the two?
You know what's funny, dude? They went from like straight A's where the school's like, oh my God, your child is br- to C students. Cause private schools, they don't.
They don't fuck around.
Yeah. They're like, here's the work. You're gonna do this work. If you suck, you're getting a C or whatever.
No coddling.
The public school, and I'm not saying all public schools are like this, but where we live, bro, they're so dumbed down at this point. Your kid is not getting an education. It's terrible.
Man, I'm in the North Kansas City School District. That scares me.
Bro, it's brutal. Like, uh, yeah, you should look into that.
Yeah.
But so yeah, I mean, my kid's handwriting has improved tremendously. You mentioned COVID, like dude, during COVID, they just put them on iPads. So they weren't even writing.
Yeah.
And then, so my wife is a reading interventionist for elementary. And there's kids now that have issues from wearing masks.
Uh, I've heard about that.
Because at a certain age, like when you're learning how to speak. Uh, it's important when you're talking to. Uh, it's important when you're talking to somebody to read their lips when you're learning how to speak and things like that. There's all kinds of problems now with kids, man.
Heard that. I've heard uh, emotional trauma because that, when you have that mask on, uh, my wife worked for a daycare, so they wear my mask. And um, the kids at a certain age didn't have to wear it, which I thought was weird. But uh, so my daughter was fortunate enough, she didn't have to wear it that, through that whole time, my youngest, but my oldest had to. I mean, you wanna talk about masks, Nazis, Jesus Christ, the story she would tell me about these teachers. And then when it just uplifted, everyone just acted like, oh, I wasn't that person, you know? It's insane, but, but so, so going back to that, like even seeing in my youngest, um, the uh, setback that she had from going through that. I mean, cause can you imagine as a young kid not under, seeing mad, happy, sad. My youngest is in kindergarten and my oldest is in seventh grade.
Okay, so your oldest is the one that I remember. And I have a sixth grader.
Yeah.
Yeah, she's same age.
Yeah, and so, and, and even the stuff she had to go through, man, I mean, how many kids went through depression during that time, being stuck at home while their parents were at work, you know?
Not only that, but they were saying like even there's kids that, you know, uh, teachers are like first reporters. So if you're in like a uh, dangerous household, like if you're being abused.
Oh, yeah, I heard, I heard abuse rates went up.
Abuse rates went up.
I heard.
About nutrition. Cause a lot of kids eat school lunch, but they're poor. They can't afford food.
The cool thing I do give credit North Kansas City, they used to bring a bus.
Yeah.
By and would drop food off. So that was really nice. But my daughter said at recess, they had to be segregated into different groups. And if they broke, like they would just go crazy, she said on them, like just yelling and upset. I mean, everybody was just so freaked out.
I have like P, I seriously have like.
And this was a while, even after there was new science, new data coming out saying how ineffective these cloth masks are, how disgusting they were in general, cause how many of those people were washing it? And then these little bitty surgeon masks that people are thinking that are gonna protect them. I mean.
Dude, I have, I straight up have like PTSD from COVID. Like I'm so, it makes, like even right now, it makes my blood freaking boil when I think about it. So the area I grew, that North Kansas City, they locked the fucking outdoor playgrounds. Like you couldn't even take your kid to the playground and play out outdoors.
I think I've seen some of that. They were using caution tape and stuff like that. Yeah.
So North Kansas City, we had a mask order longer than any other surrounding municipality in the metro. Cause they're so woke down there.
Yeah.
And dude, here's true, no bullshit. We would wear these little uh, cloth masks during the council meetings and then once the meetings were over.
Just took them right off.
The cameras turn off.
Off for show.
They all take their mask off. Hey, let's go get a beer. Hey, let's, I shit you not.
Yeah.
And so I'm not vaccinated. They don't know that. I refuse to answer.
Yeah, I'm not either.
We were in a private meeting at one, at one stage of COVID. And everyone in the meeting, of course, is vaccinated and they go, we're all comfortable taking our mask off if everyone's vaccinated and everyone just looks at me.
Even though they didn't stop the spread at all, but alright.
So they all look at me and I, I never, I told them like, I'm not answering the question. Like I refused, like it's a medical.
That's a HIPAA law violation, man. Yeah.
I mean, they couldn't, they couldn't force me to answer the question, but I didn't. I just refused.
Yeah, but how many people were asking?
They all took their masks off. They don't, so then one of my good buddies, and I don't wanna rat him out. He's a Democrat. I have a lot of Democrat friends, actually. He's a real estate client of mine and I've sold him many, many properties and we talk a lot. He's an older gentleman, uh, Jackson County. And he's a higher level politician. Uh, during COVID, uh, we would have these votes because the, so thank God dude, the governor of Missouri did some important things. Like first of all, he made it to where we couldn't have a vaccine passport. You know what that is?
I've heard about it, but I don't know the details.
New Orleans, for example, you had to carry your vaccine card around with you. And to get into any establishment, you had to show your vaccine card to get in the door.
Jesus Christ.
I was in a meeting in North Kansas City privately, where the council was yelling, screaming, cussing at the governor because they couldn't have a vaccine passport in North Kansas City. They wanted it down there to where you couldn't walk into the bar or the store or do anything.
Jacket with the gold star on it, huh?
So then, um,
It's insane.
One of my clients, this is during COVID, uh, the governor made it to where if you passed a, a uh, mask order, they expired. I think it was every month. He's like, you can't do this for more than X amount of time. So what that did is I had to keep voting on it over and over and over again. And dude, down there, I have all these crazy like woke neighbors that wear masks outdoors, wear masks in the car by themselves.
Wearing masks still to this day.
Yeah. So these people are emailing, calling me, telling me that we're all gonna die, that I'm trying to kill their kids.
Kill their grandma.
And I would have to keep voting on it over and over and they would put it on the news. They put me on the news. North Kansas City mask order passes seven to one, West Graves votes no. So I get all these, you know, they're crazy. They're fucking crazy people and uh, telling me we're all gonna die and all this stuff. So then my client going back to, you know, this is during the thick of COVID. He's, we're out looking at, I can't remember if he was looking at property or if I was selling one of his properties. And uh, I pull up and he gets out of the car just laughing his ass off. And he was like, dude, I saw you on the news again last night. He was like, I agree with the, with everything you're saying, but shut the fuck up. He's like, do not, he's like, don't say it publicly. Just stop, just stop dude. He's like, these people are like, basically, he was warning me essentially. And he told me to my face. Cause he was also voting on mask orders, just in a different part of town. He goes, I agree with you, but I'm voting yes on every mask order, cause I'm a Democrat. He's like, I have to do it. He's like, though, if I don't.
But this is the problem with the two party system, is that in order, cause, cause I know a lot of people on the left and the right. And, and it's funny because uh, I know we wanna label left and right as extreme. But there are actually just people who are actually more centered than what they really think they are. They just have to align with left or right, because if they do vote centered, it's a wasted vote in, in everyone's eyes. But how you can't just vote on what you think is morally correct. How you have to align yourself with that party, cause if you don't, you're gonna be fucking blacklisted.
Yeah. So that's.
How are we supposed to grow from that?
So the reason people like myself get attacked viciously by the news, by the KC Star, by just random people leaving Google, fake Google reviews on my business.
Yeah.
Is to scare people like him.
Oh, yeah.
And it work, it's very effective.
Yeah, they're doing it right now. There's actually a local podcast called Free Rein. And they're very right, very right. Uh, Trump supporters.
Okay.
And me, how, what I think, I think everyone should be able to express themselves freely. Uh, even if there's some things I don't believe in what they say, I don't agree on, but I still think they should be able to say what they want, you know? Um, they're being attacked right now. Actually, one of the guys that runs that podcast, uh, he works for like the Parks and Rec or something like that. Uh, he has a position there. And wind up and they're going after his job right now.
Fire his ass.
Yeah, well, they're trying to get him resigned.
He will. Yeah. I mean, it's. Yeah. I mean, it's scary out there.
Fox four news picked up their story, I guess. And don't get, they, they do talk very aggressively, but honestly.
About like violence or about?
Just about.
If you're not being violent, ideas are ideas. I'm sorry. If you can't sit there and defend your ideas, then your ideas fucking suck.
I think some of their stuff can be looked at as violent.
Okay.
The way people interpret it. I think it's a hard line of interpreting some of the things they say. I personally don't think they are violent. I think what they're saying is, is that they are prepared to defend what they think is right, if the time were to come where they had to defend that. And I don't see any issue with that.
I personally am not a Republican and the only people I've had death threats. Handwritten notes and dude, where I live, the mail, my mailbox is next to my front door. Literally, like when I open my front door, you don't even have to walk out, you can grab the mail. I had people writing handwritten death threats. And putting, putting them not through the mail with the stamp on it.
That's crazy.
Laying them in my mailbox. And they were not on the right.
Yeah.
They were leftists.
Well, I think honestly, you know, and I know the left wants to get mad about these guys on the right, but honestly, they're both. I feel like the Trump culture that has been going on right now, that you know, all these guys who are really supporting Trump, they're really just the outcome of the extreme left. They're tired of hearing all this bullshit from the extreme left. And so they're like, thank God, we have a guy that speaks for us. Well, at least in my mind, they think they, he, they think he speaks for them. I don't really believe that Donald Trump is for your everyday blue collar guy, but and we can have discussions on that. I'd like to have anybody on that, that'd like to explain to, actually I am about to have a guy on, uh, he's a Trump supporter. So I'd like to hear his side on it. But uh, I just think, man, like, you know, when you have two extremes, man, you know, they, they kind of need each other. You know, it's weird how that works, you know? You have the extreme left, you have the extreme right, and they're, they're just fighting against each other right now, you know, when really, I feel like when I'm out there talking to the day to day people, a lot more people are centered than what they think, you know? They just have to align because for some reason, politics is involved in everything that we do. And I don't think that's right. Honestly, I think the government governs best when it governs last and we're not seeing that. We're seeing more and more.
I'm anti-government. That's how I used to explain to myself, like when I was running for office, I would tell people.
Government or small government?
Bro, I'm.
You said you're libertarian at one point, so you had small government views.
I think the government fucks up more than it fixes. I think that in more times than not, the government is the problem, not the solution. And oftentimes when they try to fix something, they create five problems where there was one problem.
Or they take a long ass time to fix it.
I mean, and I will also tell you, like, if you go talk to people that work at the government, like that are the bureaucrats, like the people that Trump refers to as like the deep state.
Yeah.
These are not the best and brightest people in the world.
Real. Everyone rolls their eyes when they hear the deep state. That's real.
It's even real on the local level. I've seen it with my own eyes.
I'm not even a Trump supporter and I, what I think they're doing is wrong to him. How they're going after his assets right now, uh, something about
Yeah.
The small amount that I've read, uh, some, and I had a buddy of mine explaining it to me. That he, what did he do? The bank or something like that? Gave him a loan and they are saying that he fraudulently, yeah, overvalued it. But think about how much that, how, how many times that goes on. Not to mention, I have a hard time believing that the bank didn't do their homework on.
Correct.
You know?
An appraisal on something that's millions of dollars.
Yeah. Would you do that if you were doing like on a home, you know, like if you were giving out like, looking at comps, you're just gonna go out there and guess and go, yeah, that house is worth blah, blah, without actually researching it?
Uh, you literally can't get a loan without an appraisal unless you're putting down such a significant amount of money that if you defaulted, the bank is like, fuck it.
Andy paid it back. So what, what's the problem?
There, I mean, you're asking the wrong guy, cause I don't think there is a problem. I think that it's, it goes back to the strategy of anybody that stands up and challenges the system, they have to destroy that person in order to create an example.
Oh, yeah.
For the other people that are thinking about doing something similar.
Yeah.
They, it's, that's the method of suppression. So that you're, you're taking people like yourself that are like, I wanna stand up and make a difference in my community. So when somebody stands up, it's like that game Whack-a-Mole at Showbiz Pizza. They gotta beat everyone that stands up. They gotta beat your fucking head in.
Yeah.
Unless you are on their team to show everyone else, you don't stand up around here, we'll beat your fucking head in.
That's my problem with the parties, man, is that, and I've said this time and time again, I don't think every individuals in those parties are bad. But I believe the two parties is just two wings to the same bird, man. I mean, they're just keeping themselves afloat.
You're preaching the choir. I mean, I'm not a party system guy. You're, you're probably too young to remember this guy, but Ross Perot. Ross Perot was a businessman and I think he was like in the oil industry. This was back, I think he ran against Clinton and Bush, like Bush's dad. No, he was independent. He's a business guy.
And he's in the oil industry.
And dude, he had so much money that he was buying like thirty minute TV spots. And this was back in the day when there was no internet. And so everyone got their information from the television.
Yeah.
Ross Perot would get on TV and this was back, he was warning people about NAFTA. Cause we were shipping, we used to have factories in the United States. We actually used to produce everything.
Yeah.
And he was warning at that time, he's like, we're gonna move all of our factories into other countries. We're gonna lose jobs, where it's gonna destroy the middle class. I remember him talking about the giant sucking sound. He's like, there's a giant sucking sound of all the businesses going to foreign countries. And he warned us and that was a guy. Uh, I like Ron Paul too, which I think Ron Paul declared himself as like a Republican, I believe.
He had to.
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, but he's, but he's, well.
Those are the guys I'm attracted to.
I don't know now, because the Libertarian Party talks about him a lot, but I think they did say he had to align with the Republican Party.
Caucus. Yeah, there's, there's guys that are like congressmen and Congress will like caucus as Democrats and Republicans.
What does caucus mean? What is that? I've heard that before.
It's like where they kind of uh, group, they group up essentially. So if you're there, there are left leaning libertarians too.
Yeah.
Uh, on social issues and things like that, but uh.
But I mean, I think that's what libertarian is in general. It's, it's good parts of each side.
I don't even know. Okay, so, but being a libertarian, you have to be in an environment where you can do business with people that you may disagree with. And in today's environment, in reality, I don't think that's actually manageable at this point, because it's so, it's gotten so, everything is so split that you are forced essentially to take a side. So even someone like myself who you know, you ever take a political aptitude test, like on political compass? There's a website that you can get on and take, you answer questions. It's like, what do you think about this? What do you think about that? Just click yes and no.
And it'll tell you what you are.
And at the end, there's like an X and Y axis and it'll tell you like which, where you lean essentially. And if you really take your time and do that and answer honestly, like no one's watching.
Yeah.
Like you're not trying to impress people, you're not worried about being judged.
Trend, yeah.
I am dead center bullseye. Like I'm literally right down the middle. But what's interesting is, once I got, went public and was elected and started actually speaking out. The people on the right welcomed me, even though I disagree with them about a lot of things, about, about a lot of it, very important things, actually. The people on the left threatened to kill me.
Really?
Yeah.
All of them or some of them? Cause I wanna be careful generalizing everybody and saying.
The people that threat, were threatening to kill me were all on the left.
Yeah.
Not all the people on the left threatened to kill me, but the people that were. So what I think has happened, there's a meme that explains it better than I can verbally. But like people like me that are in the center, the left has shifted. The left shifted over to where people in the center, I think are now like.
More right.
More right. So you can even watch speeches from Joe Biden, like twenty years ago.
Oh, yeah.
And he was like, close the border.
Yeah.
Throw people in jail for doing drugs.
Fucked up the other day when he yelled out illegals.
He's illegal.
Yeah, I was like, oh shit. And old Joe's coming out.
So that's my point is like, there are people, like if you listen to like Bill Clinton from back in the nineties. If, if you listen to a Bill Clinton speech from the nineties, he sounds like Donald Trump.
Right.
Like the left has gone way, way left. In my opinion.
So what, so what got you off the libertarian train then? Cause you said you're libertarian at one point.
You can't be neutral anymore, dude. Once people are trying to kill you, you have to pick a side.
And that's why you got out of it completely.
I will net, I mean, I'll just say it bluntly. I am not a Republican. I'm not a Democrat. I do believe in God. The stuff that I went through, I promised God that I will never vote for a Democrat the rest of my life.
Yeah.
I don't care who is running for office. I will either vote independent or Republican for the rest of my life. Cause the, the stuff that I saw from Democrats, some of whom are my friends are, I'm not aligned with those people. I'm not on their team. I have friends, good friends to this day that, you know, I play golf with, I do business with, whatnot that are Democrats and that's fine, but I'm not voting for you guys. Like there's no way, dude. It's, they're gone.
Well, let's talk about too, what led you up to resigning from, from your position.
Actually didn't even really resign. I was in an election and basically announced before the, I'd already signed up for the ele- the election and then was like, I don't.
Oh, she just didn't run again.
Yeah, I was on the ballot, but I told everyone like, hey, even if you vote for me, like I'm not serving another term.
Gotcha.
So what happened is, I'll tell you the actual, there was one, there's one thing that happened that for me was like the breaking point. And right now on twenty third avenue and Swift Avenue in North Kansas City, there's a brand new apartment complex being built. Before I was on the council, the city owns that piece of land and they had torn down this old apartment complex. It was like a piece of shit. It was dilapidated. So they had this big, huge square parcel of land in between Swift Avenue and Burlington. And I'm in real estate and I knew that is the last parcel of land in North Kansas City that you can build houses on. There's literally no other parcel of land left that you can build si- single family housing. So it had already passed before I was on the council, so I thought I had nothing to do with it. It's done deal. So what happened is the developer fucked up and didn't start the project. They had like a, a date that they had to start working on the project. And if they didn't start by that date, then their contract is expired.
Yeah. Yeah.
So low and behold, it comes to me where they're like, oh, you, you're gonna vote to extend their contract. So I'm like, I'm not extending their contract, because I don't want apartments there, I want houses. So myself being naive, I was very transparent. And before every council meeting, I would read the agenda, you know, take notes, kind of research what was, what was coming up. And then I would shoot a video and tell people, I'm not a writer, I prefer to communicate verbally.
Same here, yeah.
So some people write, would write these, you know, long essays and all, so I would just shoot like a five minute video and say, here's what's gonna be on the next meeting, here's my thoughts. If you have different thoughts than me, let me know.
Yeah.
And the other thing I used to do is, I would tell people, if you have questions, tell me what questions you have. And instead of me answering them, I'll ask your question during the meeting, so that it's public. And everyone can, you know, see your, so I used to, to use that as a way to be an interface in between the public and the, you know, whatever was happening at the meeting. I tried to really, uh, allow people to be interactive. So like you mentioned at the beginning of our talk, you're like, you know, I don't have time to go to a meeting and speak. Well, if you got somebody like me, you can message them and say, hey, you represent me, I want you to ask this question on my behalf. And if you have a good representative, they should do that.
Yeah.
So anyways, I shot this video, I said, here's the deal, this apartment, you know, I explained it. I'm voting no, and here's why I'm voting no, because I want houses there to be on that spot. And so just flippantly, at the end, I said, it's gonna pass six to two. Because there was six people on the council that are literally like robots that vote the exact same way. Every meeting, they would even get into a huddle, like a football team before meetings. I shit you not, they would huddle up and be like, I'm voting, you know, do this, do this, do this. To where during meetings, if I started asking questions, sometimes they would even get upset, and they're like, we already know this is gonna pass, just shut the fuck up, so we can go ahead and pass it, because they were voting, they were a majority. And they could pass anything they wanted to.
Yeah.
And I could sit there and whine and cry all day and vote no, and it would still pass.
Was there anybody in there that was helping you?
No, fuck no. So, but check this out, this is wild. So I shoot a video, and this video was on my city council page on Facebook. So I shoot a video, say, I'm voting no, it's gonna pass six to two, so it's kind of irrelevant that I'm voting no, but here's why I'm voting no. I wish it was houses going in there, I believe. I, you know, I'm a Realtor, I believe in homeownership. I think that homeownership builds wealth. And then the other thing is, North Kansas City is almost ninety percent renters. Think about that. The city of North Kansas City, if you look at the residents, about ninety percent of the people rent. That is fucking horrible. That's like unheard of.
I think it's intentionally being done right now.
I do too, we'll come back to that. So dude, I shoot this video, ten minutes go by, my phone, actually, I got an email. And this is important note, the city attorney, deep state motherfucker, emails me and says, call me. And I was naive, so I didn't think, like, and I'm in real estate, so I know, sometimes if I'm doing a real estate transaction, if the other agent shady, I'll make them, I'll communicate to them via text or email, so that everything's in writing.
Yeah.
So this guy has me calling, I call him, hey, what's up, Tom? He goes, so you're voting no on this apartment? I go, yeah, I am. I go, it's, it's gonna pass. So it's irrelevant, and he goes, well, I just want you to know the repercussions of what you're doing. And, uh, and all this stuff. So I go, are you trying to, you know, tell me what, how to vote right now? Like, are you trying to change my vote? Oh, no, I would never do that, I would never do that, all this. So I get off the phone with him. Another ten minutes go by, bing, I get an email. So basically, what happened is, there was one of the yes votes that was on vacation. He wasn't gonna be at the meeting, so he contacted the city. Said, hey, man, Wes and Tony are voting no, I'm not gonna be there, it's not gonna pass. So they plucked it from the agenda and moved it to the next meeting, when he'll be there, so it would pass. So the city attorney was essentially representing the developer, not the community, not the people that voted for me. Not the, you know, the, the two people that voted no on that apartment are the ones that live in that ward where the apartment's being built.
Yeah.
So the two people that live next to where the apartment is were against it. The reason we were against it is because all of our neighbors were against it. And then the six other people that are in a cult pushed it through and passed. Here's the other interesting thing. They didn't tell us this, but I asked a lot of questions, and sometimes I would uncover things during questioning that was shocking. So when that vote was being held, I asked this lady, community development lady, who's unelected, another deep state person. Did you get any bids for single family housing on that plot of land? She goes, no, we only asked developers to give us proposals for apartments only. So they didn't even, so I have friends that build houses that are big developers. And I would ask them, why don't you ever build houses in North Kansas City? They go, they don't want us to. They don't, they don't want us to. So there's cities like Riverside and Parkville, they're building beautiful, nice houses. And North Kansas City doesn't want them. They're obsessed with density.
Huh.
They even put that in their mission statement, like for the city, that they, they're, they're trying to get density.
What does that, what does that mean? What do you mean?
Squeezing as many people into a small space as possible, density. So this whole, you wanna talk about some, uh, how it's being done intentionally, it really is.
Yeah.
They're trying to get.
Cause that's all I see right now, even up here in Gladstone, that's all I see.
Walkable, these fifteen minute cities, they want people to live, work, shop, everything within walking distance of your house.
Yeah.
Um, a lot of it has to do with global warming. They all think that we're gonna die of global warming. So North Kansas City, we passed.
Negative thirty like last month or some shit?
So we passed this, um, climate agenda, like no carbon by twenty thirty. And it was like an eighty page document, and I read the whole document, it was batshit crazy. And then during the meeting, we were voting, I literally was like, did anybody read this document? None of them raised their fucking hand.
They already know what they're, where they're gonna vote. Yeah, why, why read it?
It said climate change.
What are you gonna say? Yes, okay, that's what we're gonna say.
It said climate change, so they're like, oh, that's a Democrat thing, I'm voting yes on that.
That's insane.
So you, you wanna hear some of the shit that's in the document? I started reading it at the meeting, just to put it on public record. Dude, it is so racist.
Really?
Dude, it says that, did you know that climate change is racist?
Is it?
It disproportionately, climate change disproportionately affects people of color. Because they're too poor to afford air conditioning, so we need to plant trees, so that when it's hot outside, they can sit under trees.
What the fuck? Sounds like, it said that in there.
Yes. Sounds like fucking, that's how you would talk about like a monkey.
Oh, my god.
Like, you're too stupid to have air conditioning, because you're a person of color, so we have to plant trees.
That's insane.
Yeah. So then like, some of the shit they try to do makes, if you try to think about it logically, is just so like, they were talking about getting electric police cars.
Well, they're not. It's like, they're gonna, they're gonna try to clip that, what you just said right now, and be like, oh, Wes thinks they're monkeys.
I've already been canceled, so I don't care.
But that's what they did to you, but I'm saying, that's what they do. They find a word and they target on it. It's just like what happened to you when you said pedophile or, or satan- Satanism. You know, it's like they zero in on that, and they go, well, he thinks they're this. It's like, did he say that? You know, I mean, could you say he could have used, uh, uh, different words? You can say that, but why are you, why are you zeroing in on that? Why don't you hear exactly what he was trying to say? He was trying to say, he doesn't want other businesses to be blacklisted if they don't want to support.
So what you're, what you're referencing right now was called the, oh god, what was it called? There's this, there's this program that they wanted to go around to businesses, even churches. Not households, but it was like basically companies.
Yeah.
And make them pledge for inclusiveness. So, and then if they signed the pledge, they would put a sticker in their window, physically put a sticker in the window. And then they were gonna publish a list on the internet, saying like, these are the approved businesses that are pro inclusivity.
Yeah.
And so I spoke out against it, and sometimes I'll use words on purpose that are like.
What's, like a shock factor?
Yes, to like raise people's, not to raise attention, but to trigger people essentially, on purpose sometimes.
Yeah.
Uh, it's like a technique. So anyways, I mentioned, I was thinking of like, what are the two furthest things that could be considered inclusiveness, that, that most people, everyday people would find objectionable.
Right.
And so I have seen, there's like a South Park episode about the Man Love Boy Association. There is a TED Talk I've seen with this woman who was talking about how there are people that are called minor attracted persons.
Insane.
And these people are, she says they can't help it, that they are attracted to children. And these are adults I'm talking about, not children. Adults that are, you know, sexually attracted to kids. And their argument is that they can't help it, and if they don't act upon it, you know, as long as they don't molest a child, then they should be welcomed into society essentially. And there's even things I've seen recently where, um, I think it's in other countries, where they're even giving these people like sex dolls that look like little kids.
Yeah, I've seen that.
Cause they're like, oh, if they fuck a doll.
Yeah.
Then they aren't gonna.
They won't fuck a real kid, yeah.
Yeah. So anyway, so I brought that up, and, uh, people, and it triggered people. And that was my fault, because I didn't realize that in the gay and lesbian community, they do not want anything to do with that community, even though that community is trying to insert themselves.
Yeah.
Into the LGBTQIA plus community. The vast majority, I mean, everyone I've met that is in that community, is like, those people are disgusting. How dare you try to attach them to us?
Right.
But I was, I'm just a dumbass white guy. I grew up in the nineties, like, we didn't have all this education that they do now.
Yeah.
So from my perspective, I hurt people's feelings big time, and there were even kids that were like, uh, that were in my community, that were writing me letters and things that were very upsetting. Um, to me personally, like, I hurt people's feelings, and like, made them feel unwelcome in my community, which was not my objective whatsoever, and I felt terrible about that. And then, so I went and met, so here's what's, here's, it gets weird. So these, these communities start reaching out to me. And there are groups like locally, um, some big, some small, some are like actually political groups that are consisted of like the LGBTQ community. Every person that called me, every reporter that called me, I would answer the phone, at, answer every single question. Every single time, they were like, uh, we're expecting you to be like homophobic, and you're obviously not, like, we understand what you're saying. So I went and met physically, like, went and met with these groups, and let, dude, I would sit in a room and let there'd be twenty people yelling at me, calling me names, like, dude, I was crying, like, I cried, like, it was bad, dude. I went through a lot, like, I learned a lot about how your words, like, I choose my words more carefully in that regard. Um, but at the same time, some of those meetings, I took things out of them where I was like, this is not something that I want to be aligned with. I went into the meetings very open minded, as far as like, hey, like, I wanna hear your point of view. I'm sorry that I offended you, and, you know, I'm here to listen essentially. And, but some of the stuff that they were getting into me on was like, over the line in my opinion, like, I mentioned you earlier, like my kids. No, 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 my kids, dude.
Oh, okay.
So here's what's weird, is I brought up the whole minor attracted person, pedophile, all that, and that. But then you go to these meetings, and not everyone, but there was people that were like, you know, I think my son at the time was in, my youngest son was in second grade. And they're like, you should have, you know, gay people babysit your kid. And I'm like, his, they didn't know this, but like, I have gay people in my family that babysit my kid.
Yeah.
They're like, we have books that you wanna, you know, we're gonna give you these books to go home and read your kids these books. Stuff like that, where it's just like, dude.
Forcing it.
Leave me alone. Like, they're my kids. I don't tell you how to raise your kids.
Yeah.
So that's kind of my point about like the whole libertarian, you can't be a libertarian right now. You can't be like live and let live, because they either, you either have to adopt their point of view, or they wanna kill you. There's no in the middle.
Yeah, man, and that's crazy, man, you know, and I'm sure a lot of people don't agree on my way of thoughts on, uh, how children should be raised, but I think all that shit should be left out. Wait till they get older and they can fully understand. Without getting into too much detail, I have personally seen the effects on a child, where they have, are having that stuff pushed into their head. And it's confusing them, you know? A child should just be left to be a child, man. Like, let, let them be a child, let them grow up. Uh, can you explain to your child, you should be able to, you should respect everybody, no matter what they think, feel, what, whatever, they, however they wanna live their life, respect them, yes. But to force kids into, this is how you should think, or this is how you should be, or you are this, forcing them into that is wrong.
I guess my difference in opinion on you in that regard is that, if you wanna teach your kids that shit, be my guest.
Yeah, I have no issues with that.
But if you want to tell me that I have to teach my kids that, or I'm some kind of monster, then fuck you.
Well, my thing is more of in public schools. That's what I mean. Whatever you do in your home, I'm not gonna tell you what to do in your own home.
That at school?
From what I've heard, you know, I, not, not from, I haven't heard from teachers. But I know between other children and where are they learning this from, you know what I mean? I'm sure they have parents at their home that are cramming this shit in their head, and then they're putting it in other kids' heads. It's like, and I'm sure there are teachers out there that are doing that as well. I mean, I've read a lot of stories on it. Luckily, at the school that she goes to, I haven't seen that yet. Um, but yeah, like I said, it, it, when it comes down to your own home, I am for you doing whatever the fuck you want. You can do whatever you want, it's your home. But my thing is, is when it comes into a public setting, like a public school for children, all that shit should be left off the table.
Hundred percent.
We're here to learn, that's it.
I would, I mean.
Yeah.
The teachers that are pushing that should be fired immediately.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
And, and vice versa, like, if somebody was trying to push some type of right wing agenda on the kids, they should be fired. Kids should be learning math, how to write, how to read.
I'm for people who are religious, you know what I mean? Uh, I don't think it should be crammed in, I don't think people should be forcing religion on people, you know, that's my thoughts on that. Some people may think differently. Um, I just don't think anything should be forced.
Are you religious personally?
I dabble in and out. Right now, I've been, I don't, I don't associate with a particular religion. Or I'm not like church wise, not into churches, but I do believe in a higher power, you know? And, but over the years of growing up, I've been where I just like, this is bullshit, and I've been kind of in and out, you know what I mean? Um, I think the Bible serves a good purpose, you know? Uh, I think, I think it was kind of a guide to life a long time ago, and even today, it can still correlate. But, uh, but one thing I think that religion does bring, and what I'm seeing a lot right now, because I'm really into Stoicism, and I think kind of the two go hand in hand. Um, I think it brings purpose and community, you know, and I think that's one thing that is failing in society right now.
I actually got attacked by devil worshippers too.
Oh, did you?
Yeah, they were messaging me like, how dare you, like, they exist, bro, for real. How dare you?
I know they do, I know some of them.
Yeah, you have offended the devil worshiping community, they have attacked me too. I've been attacked by all kinds of groups I didn't even know existed, to be honest with you.
That's insane.
I've been the same, man. I've gone through periods of my life where I was even, I even hated God for a period of my life, dude, I've had friends die.
Oh, yeah.
And then like, you know, I've been everything from atheist to hating God. I consider myself Christian right now. But I don't go to church.
And, and I think people should be allowed to do whatever they want, man. I mean, that's what it comes down to, is just let people live, man. We're on this fucking rock floating through space for such a small amount of time, and we're over here trying to tell each other how to fucking live. And then the people that are just like beating down to the point to where they're like, okay, I'm just gonna go with these guys, because they're fucking beating the shit out of me. Okay, yes, I will follow you guys. And then they live a, a, a life of just a sad life, because they're like, if, well, if I pull away, I'm gonna get outcasted, you know?
So check this out. I have this, I was talking to my buddies golfing last week. I play golf, two of the guys I play golf with are, are left. And then one guy's like a libertarian, and then me. We were talking about this the other day, uh, because I'm, I'm trying to move. And I was like, I think people would actually be happier if we lived in, it's basically like segregation. But not based on race and things like that, but based on like, you know, not even red state, blue state. But essentially like like-minded people, if you live in a community where generally speaking, people think the same way.
Yeah.
I think that people would be happier.
For sure.
The place where I live is very, the people that are different than me, that are in the majority where I live, are very happy, they like it there. But if you live in an area where you are the outsider, it is a fucking nightmare. Like, it's not enjoyable in any, in any way. So I think people, as a Realtor, like putting my Realtor hat on, Realtors are not allowed to answer questions anymore about there's fair housing laws, which sound great, but there's a lot of like repercussions that are, that people don't realize. Like, I'll give you an example. I've had clients that are like Catholic, and they're like, Wes, I wanna live near a Catholic church. I can't do that. Like, I literally have to, they can tell me like, I wanna live in a certain subdivision. But I can't direct them based on like a church location.
Why?
Because it's steering somebody based on religion. Because it's steering somebody based on religion. There's like different classes of people.
Wrong with that?
It's a.
I mean, ultimately it's their money. They're going to pick, they want to pick a place where they feel comfortable. I don't see anything.
So that's the argument that, which I agree with you, but that's not what the law states. I think that if somebody hires me as their Realtor and says, I want to live. By a certain church.
Yeah.
Then my job as a Realtor should be to find them a house near that certain church. But what we're taught as a Realtor is to tell them essentially, hey, I, you know, you need to get on a website. Find neighborhoods in the area that you want and you can give me a list of subdivisions and I can find you a house in that subdivision.
They just want you to kind of protect yourself and stay neutral. I mean, because something could, I'm sure somebody could.
And the reason is back, back in the day, even in North, believe it or not, North Kansas City, the superintendent brought this up to me. Because this is why he was like, this is a racist community. You have a history of racism, blah, blah, blah. Cause back in the day. There's a bridge that goes down nine highway that goes into the city market from North Kansas City.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
That bridge used to be a sundown bridge.
Is that the one that uh, what is that bridge called?
Heart of America.
Right by the gas, oh, that bridge?
Heart of America Bridge, like when you're going down Burlington.
Oh no, that's not Heart of America. I thought Heart of America was.
That's I thirty five.
Yeah, I know what bridge you're talking about. Right there where that gas station is right there. Yeah, right.
You go over it and you're down in the city market. You got like Caddyshack over here, city. That bridge, this is before we were even alive, but, but I have friends that are old enough that remember this happening. And I know police officers from North Town, they're now eighty years old that remember this happening. But if you were black, you would, you could come to North Town to work during the day. But it's a sundown bridge, so at night, you better get the fuck over the bridge.
Really?
Yeah. And that wasn't that long ago.
That's fucked up.
Yeah. Like I'm talking maybe like nineteen seventy, like sixties, stuff like that. Yeah. So there's, there is history of that happening, but back in the day, like if you sell a very old house, like. There's houses for sale, like the house I live in is a hundred and four years old, but there, there's some towns like Weston and stuff like that where you can find Liberty. There's houses from the eighteen hundreds and you can find deeds for the house, like the title company. That's literally like, you can't sell this house to a black person.
Oh, yeah. Like when they had zoning laws back then.
So back in the day, there were Realtors that, you know, if you hired me and you're of a certain race. Then I would only show you properties in a certain area.
Right, right. Okay. So I understand.
That's the intent of the law is to stop that. But what I find interesting is that people tend to self. Segregate. What I mean by that, I'll give you an example. I don't know if it's still that way, but there's a neighborhood uh, called Crestview that's over, not, you know.
Yeah, my brother still lives in it.
Crestview. There's a lot, I don't know if it still is this way, but there used to be a lot of Bosnian people that lived there.
Oh, really?
And I had a client one time tell me, uh, he's like, Wes, sell me a house in Crestview. And I'm like. You know, are you open to looking in other areas? He's, no, only Crestview. So I'm like, you know, why, you know?
They probably feel more comfortable.
That's what he told me. He goes, you know, there's, I'm Bosnian. That's my, you know, culture. We have a different culture. We have a different language. I feel comfortable around those people. So don't, he's like, don't even bother showing me houses that aren't in that area.
Yeah.
So I think.
But I see nothing wrong with that, man. I know guys that grew up in the northeast community. That when they come up north to visit me, they're like, damn man, I can't breathe up here, dude. I, I'm, I like living in my hood, you know? And I see nothing wrong with that. If that's where you feel comfortable, go for it. But the sad thing is, is if a white person were to say. I want to be with my people, that's when.
White supremacist, oh my god, Nazi, KKK.
Yeah. That's why I'm saying, culture can sometimes be a hindrance, man. Like culture is beautiful. It's a beautiful thing. But it can also just, I don't know, man, there's just some extremes to it, man, that just, I, I don't, I don't particularly like.
I like different cultures and the interesting thing is dude, if we all mix, if we mix everyone together.
Yeah.
And everyone blends into.
But we are, now we're fighting.
There won't be any culture.
Yeah.
Like if you mix everything together into like soup, then there's no differences in cultures. At that point, it's all just consumerism essentially. We'll just become consumers.
Yeah.
I think that's where it's, I mean, the long game, like the big picture, that's what we're being pushed for. And that's like you mentioned earlier about the homeownership. You're like, I feel like we're trying to, they're like forcing us to rent essentially.
Yeah, I know they are.
That is the goal.
Yeah, to have all renters, banks own all the homes. Yeah.
And.
I've read some articles where companies are using their old brick and mortar um, um, buildings. To um, turn into apartments and they're offering that with the job. They're saying, hey, if you work for us, you also get an apartment as well. Because everything's going to remote, you know? So like, what are we going to do with these buildings?
Bro, I heard the other day, I follow real estate news forecasts and stuff like very closely and I work at RE/MAX. So I get a lot of training and I'm up to date. They're saying that the number of buyers for every home. Is the largest number in twenty five years. There's like no houses available. We have like a severe housing shortage.
That's what I heard.
And then like Kansas City, Missouri just passed these green regulations for like building uh, houses to be. Efficient, efficiency standards. And this is, goes back to like why there's unintended consequences to laws. Like they pass this thing and they're like, hey, new houses are going to be more efficient. So that increased builder cost by thirty thousand dollars per house.
Seen it personally.
So you know what builders did? We're not going to build houses here.
Yeah.
So they're going to like areas like Gladstone, Smithville, Carney, Flat City, all these surrounding neighborhoods. All the builders are just going there. So right now here in Kansas City, there's neighborhoods that you drive around, like I know builders. And there's houses that are being built and you go talk to the builder and they're like, I'm just finishing these couple houses. And I own three other lots here and I'm trying to sell them to some other builder because I'm getting the fuck out of here. Like I'm going to go build somewhere else.
Yeah.
So stuff like that actually exacerbates the housing shortage.
And the time dude, I mean, just to pass some of those inspections are ridiculous, man. I've had to deal with some of them. It's. And they're not making those houses any better. Look at some of the older houses compared to the newer homes, you know?
I, I mean, I've only owned hundred year old houses. I'm done with that dude. I'm like, the next house I buy, I'm like, I'm not a subdivision guy.
You're going new?
I'm going subdivision dog, like.
Yeah, I get him and the maintenance wise on a, on a.
I'm doing it more for the kids aspect. Cause like if you live in a, okay, so bear with me, like if you live in a subdivision where they're like building new homes. Most people moving in there are like families, right? With kids. Where I live right now, there's like homeless people all over. Like my kids can't play outside. There's like shootings in the front yard. There's homeless people like pissing on the building next door.
Yeah.
So I want to live in one of those neighborhoods where I can be like, hey, go, go to the neighborhood pool, drive around in a golf cart, smoke a cigar. You know, my kids can play with fifty other kids. All the kids in the neighborhood go to the same school. I'm not a, like I don't like Karens. I'm not a big HOA guy. So I'm taking one for the team, doing it for my family, but. Living in old houses too, man. It's like every time you fix something, something breaks, fix that, that breaks.
I always have something going on with it, but um, I do want to get on, touch on that subject though. Uh, let's take a break real quick and we'll come back.
Okay. Are we live?
Yeah, we're back.
Alright, so. Yeah, like what, what can happen to you essentially is.
We're talking about.
Basically, basically like cancel, cancel culture. So I'm, I am on a, I'm on a, a uh, list. I'm on a list that people have sent me that uh, there's like a list of people that you're not supposed to do business with in Kansas City.
Wow.
If you're a leftist.
Can you find that list?
Uh, I think it's like.
Like a personal list?
No, it's like a, it's a Facebook group that you can join. Yeah. And the, the funny thing is, the only reason I know I'm on the list is. Someone that we know screenshotted it because she was on the, in the group. One of our friends is like a leftist person. And saw them talking about me on there and tried to defend me and was like, I know Wes and his family and like, he's actually a good, good dude. Like leave him alone. And they kicked her out of the group. And uh, if you really want to hear something twisted. One of the people in the group, I have six sisters, one of my sisters is in the group.
Wow.
And she was on there telling people, he's my brother, he's a piece of shit. Like if you DM me, I'll tell you all the details about.
Your own sister said this?
Correct.
Oh my god.
Yeah. And she, she owned a business that I sent, I no longer do, but I sent massive amounts of business to her business also. So I was like supporting her business while she was privately, you know, she didn't think I would ever see it, but it was screenshot and sent to me.
Oh, so like in person to person, she was cool with you, but then behind closed doors, oh shit dude. It's gotta be awkward at the family.
I don't talk to her anymore. I won't even speak to her.
That's sad, man. I'm seeing that a lot right now with family. You know, I've had some family members not go to that level. But during the P three podcast times that I used to do, I mean, they were just, you know, COVID, you know, supporters. And they were just like, you're fucking, you know, basically a piece of shit in a nice way. And you need to fall in line because you don't know what the fuck you're talking about.
Did you lose friends over it?
I don't. Uh, maybe I did. If I did, I didn't notice and there must not have been much of a friend, but I don't feel like I lost anybody really close to me now. Because like I said, dude, I think a majority of people are level headed, like they're pretty, they have common sense. I think the internet kind of gives voices to the micro, you know, groups.
Sometimes the craziest people are the loudest people too.
For sure. And, and they make them seem like they have numbers, but I think if you, if you pull people away from these tribes and speak to them individually. Which is what I do a lot, even off camera. I'm a, I'm a yapper. I yap all the time. That's why I started this. Um, I've talked to people, even people with the most left leaning ideologies and people the most right leaning ideologies. And they're sensible people, man. You know, if you get them out of that tribe and able to talk without anything and, or anybody watching or a camera in front of their face. They will be realistic and uh, like uh, pretty centric on, on a lot of things, you know? Like they're not, they're not as crazy as we think, you know? It's when they get them in those groups when they're like. I don't know. It's just that power of a group, you know, mindset. They all start coming out of the woodworks and they're just, I don't know. It's like they fuel each other with crazy radicalism, you know?
No, it is. It's like a mob mentality.
Yeah.
And they think that um, the way that the current like culture that we live in seems to reward that behavior. So sometimes, and I've witnessed this firsthand, there, I've seen people basically vocalize these things. That I know they don't even really believe, but they're just trying to be accepted into that group or whatever.
Oh, yeah.
Um, I don't know, man. I have, I personally have an issue with forgetting. Like during COVID, a lot of people that I used to be friends with acted in certain ways, said things.
And act now as if they.
And I can't look at them the same way. Like I can't, I have a really good memory and I also judge people by their actions. Not their pers- yeah, what, you know, they want you to perceive them as.
Do you believe in forgiveness though?
Oh, yeah.
If you see change.
Changed my, myself personally has changed.
Yeah.
I've changed myself many multiple, like I'm always changing. I'm always analyzing. I do stuff all the time where I, I'm like, man, that was terrible. Don't ever do that again. Like I do believe in forgiveness, but I also, I mean, I'm admitting that I have a problem with forgetting that. When, if I see somebody act a certain way and then come back and try to act, oh, I'm totally cool. Nah, man, I've seen it. Like, I wish I could forget.
I think I wouldn't mind if they actually grew and changed from it, realized what they did was wrong and moved on. You know what I mean? Just like the instance that we were talking about earlier, uh, where your comments were taken out of context. And you publicly said, hey, sorry, I should have used maybe different terms. This is what I meant. You know, I've learned, I've grown, you know, can I move on from this? And I don't think it's right to keep somebody there and, and not let them grow from that, you know what I mean? Like. It's, it's not right. You can't, if they've learned and they've, they've grown from what they said, I don't think we should just shun them. You know what I'm saying?
I do, but at the same token, um, what, what I went through on that level was actually, sounds insane. But looking back on it was like a good thing. Because A, I grew from it. B, a lot of people in my life. I realized are not really good for me. Like they, the minute that they found that they could get some type of social status points. For sticking a knife in my back, they took that opportunity. So I got rid of all these shitty people that were in my life. That, that's the only way I found out how shitty they really are. And then I replaced them with good people.
Right.
So you know what's wild is like, they tried to cancel my business. I had like, since that's happened. I've had the best years I've ever had.
Yeah.
In business. So I lost business. I had people that will never work for me again. But for every one of them I lost, I gained two people. So it's.
How did your job take to that? Were they supportive? I'm guessing because you're still there.
So it's interesting. Um, I just switched offices and actually one of the reasons I switched offices, I still work at RE/MAX. But I just have a different brokerage, different broker. Each RE/MAX office has like an owner, like a different owner. And they kind of can run the office however they see fit. And when that happened, my previous broker supported me. But there were people in my office that were like, hey, so then he ended up hiring. A lady to run the office that is like a woke lady. She even sent a, and I'm, I'm an independent employee, right? So I'm not really, uh, I'm like self-employed. I'm not really, like, I don't really have a boss. Yeah. I actually pay, I actually pay them to work there. Like they make, I pay them, they don't pay me, if that makes sense. So she sent around this um, agreement. That she wanted access to all of our social media accounts and wanted us, she basically wanted permission to. Delete, edit, like if you put out something that she didn't agree with, then she would have the right to be like, you have to delete.
Personal Facebook account.
Yeah. So I wrote, go fuck yourself on the sheet and gave it back to her. But there was another guy in my office, actually before that happened to me. That he got wrapped up in this Facebook thing because he made a comment about, it was like. Um, trans women playing sports.
Really?
In some conversation about, you know, people that were born biologically male, doing women's sports.
Yeah.
He made some comment and then people identified him as where he worked and then were threatening the company and saying. This is a homophobic company, boycott them, sue them, you know, started threatening them. And then my dumb ass comes along like two months later with that and then end up like on the news, Casey Star article. Dude, that just triggered a memory too. That's very interesting. Uh, so I'm, I was in the backyard one night. This, my phone rings. It's a weird, it was a number from like Chicago. And as a Realtor, like I get calls from, I, I always answer the phone. So I pick up and it's a, it's a reporter. And he's like, can I talk to you? I'm like, yeah, man, you know, I got nothing to hide. I'll answer any questions. I'm not homophobic, you know, what, you know, what's up? So I literally, I lit a cigar and I sat there and I talked to him for an hour on the phone and he was in Chicago. Talked to him man on man, just like you and I are talking. I answered every single question, no matter how uncomfortable it was. This is the guy that wrote the Casey Star articles about, about me. And the interesting thing is. I told him, I go, dude, you writing these articles is going to hurt my family, you know, like on a personal level. I'm like, I'm getting death threats, like my wife is scared to water the flowers. You publishing this is going to hurt my family. And I was like, I've already apologized. For the comments and I explained to you why I did that, because I was just uneducated on the topic. I wasn't trying to like shit on people. And uh, so he, he tells me, the reporter, he goes, I'm ordered to write this. He's like, it's not my choice.
Wow.
I was like, this is my job. They told me to write this article about you, so I'm just writing it. And he goes, honestly, I agree with you. It's like, I understand what you're saying.
But he has to do it to keep a job.
So I told the guy, point, I go, I'm, I'm assuming you went to college, you got a journalism degree, like, don't you feel like a bitch right now? For doing this? Like you're sitting here writing a hit piece on some dude with a wife and kids. And you know, this is bringing heat to my family. And here you are, you're going to do this like a little bitch, you know? And he, dude, the phone was silent. I thought he hung up on me. Cause he knows dude, like, yeah, I'm a hitman basically for the Casey Star.
Yeah.
So then going back to the deep state, guess who? Um, the city assistant, city manager person. Uh, you know, one of those chicks that has like the pink stripe in her hair and all that.
Yeah.
Her husband works for the Casey Star.
Oh. Yeah.
So it was all just orchestrated. Yeah.
And people think that that doesn't happen. So there, there's a, there's a example right there.
They told me to resign and I was like, no, I'm not going to resign. And so then hit piece, hit piece, they started hitting me with hit pieces. And I still was like, I'm not resigning.
They basically just beat you down to the point where you're like, I don't even want to fuck with this anymore, alright?
By the end, dude, by the end of the term, the uh, they were, the, the same person that was attacking me during all that. The other council lady was mocking my religion at a meeting, saying that you're a Christian, you're in a cult. In a public meeting on camera, I can show you video of it.
It's weird how some uh, groups can be attacked in some, yeah, it's weird.
So the guy sitting next to me, who. So the guy sitting next to me, who's my buddy, he's an old man and he's Jewish and we live close by. So after meetings, we would walk home together.
Yeah.
And after a meeting, we're walking home and I was like, man, you just like, you just sat there while she was mocking my religion, dude. Not to be a bitch, but I almost cried, dude. I was sitting in a room of all these people. Like it makes me like tear up thinking about it, like it's, I can't even explain to people, like if you're sitting there in a group on camera, on TV and people are mocking your religion and no one sticks up for you.
Yeah, you feel alone. Yeah, outcasted.
Not even that, dude. I can't even, I can't even put words to it.
Yeah.
I felt like, I don't want anything to do with any of you motherfuckers. Fuck all of you. Fuck this place. Why am I even trying to help this community at this point?
Yeah.
That was the point right then, when I was like, I'm done. Fuck this place. Like I told the guy walking home, I go, dude, you're Jewish. If somebody in that meeting got up and was like mocking you for being a Jew, I would have thrown a fucking chair across the room. I'm not Jewish, but I would have stuck up for you.
Yeah.
That's not cool, man.
Yeah, man, there's no more respect nowadays, you know, and no loyalty, man, like, you know, be, and not even loyalty as in like, you need to back me on whatever I say because it's me for what's right, you know? Uh, we preach this thing about freedom. And, and that's what cracks me up about those councilmen. It's like, right before the meeting, they stand up and they do the pledge of allegiance and, you know, wanna preach about freedom and stuff like that, yet you're telling people basically what they told, fuck your group. Uh, you need to align with our group. You need to do this. You need to do that. Where's the freedom in that?
You know what's funny is they always, uh, they put, they have words, they play with words too. Like they're like, all are welcome. No, they aren't. Like, look how you treat me. We're not all welcome. Like, we're all welcome as long as you agree with your ideology. And like going back to religion, somebody said something the other day, I didn't make this up, it was very interesting. Everyone is religious, whether you realize it or not. Cause if you don't believe in God, ultimately, you, you worship whatever you value the highest. So there's people that are atheists, but they, they're obsessed with money.
Right.
There's people that are atheists, but they're obsessed with fame or they're obsessed with their, their body, their sexuality, their, LGBTQ is like a religion to cer- to certain people.
Yeah.
Everyone has a religion, but for some reason, and I'm not trying to, I shouldn't even say this because it makes me sound like a crybaby, but, like the society we currently live in, if you're a straight white guy, a straight Christian white guy, you can say whatever you want about me and it's totally fine. You can go in a public meeting, call me every name in the book, spit on me, do anything.
But I don't think that's right, man. That's, that's wrong. I mean, you're basically, it's like the pendulum swinging to the other side. It's like, we want everyone to be treated right and respectfully and, and, and yet we go, yeah, everyone can be except for this group of people. Well, we're doing the same thing that was done back in the sixties and the forties and the, you know, like we're, we're just picking a different side now, you know? How is that right?
It's not effective, because as a centrist, what they did is they essentially just completely, dude, I, I voted for Obama. Like I'm not some right wing.
Yeah.
Guy, but now I am.
Yeah.
Like I'm never voting for a Democrat the rest of my life, after the way I was treated.
That's what upsets me about politics, man, that we talked about earlier is that it's getting to the point where you're having to align the sides because it's.
Yeah.
In order to live the life you want, you have to vote a certain way. And that's, that's why I'm big on either, letting another party get a chance to go in there and let's see what they do, which, you know, I've always kind of supported the Libertarian Party. Um, but I've also dabbing in and out of, you know, just wanting it all to fucking crumble and reset, you know? Even though I know there's bad that comes out of that too, creating a power vacuum or, you know, the, the dangers that can come out of that. But I'm to the point where I'm just sick and like the quote I said earlier, I believe that the government governs best when it governs less. And right now it's not, it's in fucking everything right now.
Yeah.
So I, I don't know, man. I, I don't know. Uh, to go back on what we were talking about before the break, uh, the homelessness problem, I mean, you had to deal with it firsthand. I think this is a big issue right now. Uh, I heard some of your videos on your Facebook and this is one thing I appreciated about you, man. You were, um, like fair enough to say to everybody, hey, I don't know everything on this topic. And this was years back when, that this video was posted. I'm not as knowledgeable on this topic, but I'm more than willing to sit with someone who is. I admire that a lot about you. I don't, I don't see a lot of people doing that. For some reason, with a lot of politicians, I'm not gonna say all of them. But they're big on, they know fucking everything, alright? And you don't know shit and you're gonna listen to me, you know? You dealing with that in your own neighborhoods, man. I mean, how big of a problem was that down there?
Alright, so check this out. Uh, breaking news, I don't think this is even public. The, when I was first elected to the city council, I got a, there's a lot of memos that go out to public officials that are not on the news. If there's crime in your neighborhood, like if there's a shooting, they don't want that on the news, because it makes your neighborhood look bad.
Oh, for sure.
So I got this memo within a month of being, taking office, that Quentin Lucas, the mayor of KCMO,
Yeah.
was publicly announcing that he was gonna solve homelessness. What he actually did was filled a hotel in North Kansas City, like off of I thirty five and Armor Road behind McDonald's. Filled it with homeless people. So if you're the ho- if you're the hotel owner, he took the deal because he's like, oh, you're gonna fill my hotel? Yeah, I'll take the money, right? So, and this is all in the news, actually. You can look it up. I can link you to news articles. So then this guy, they trashed the hotel, obviously. There's hookers, there's shootings, there, I mean, all, all hell breaks loose. All of a sudden, this one little pocket of North Town just is like a shithole, crime infested. And so the hotel owner is like, you're out of here, get the fuck out of here. So the new, the local news reported that the hotel owner is a monster. They start interviewing these, these individuals that were staying there and presented them as like, here's this guy, he's trying to get his life back together. He's in this hotel, he just took a job and now he's getting thrown out on the street. So they portrayed the hotel owner as like, you're this monster. And Quentin Lucas then scooped him up and shipped him up to the airport, to a hotel up by the airport. But what's crazy is if you sit here and think about this, North Kansas City is not Kansas City, Missouri. He shipped homeless people to a surround, to a municipality next door. So that would be like if, if North Kansas City was like, we're gonna solve homelessness and we ship them to Gladstone.
Throw them all in yours, yeah.
It's insane.
Your problem.
Yeah. It's like a psychopath behavior. And then get on TV and brag about how, oh, I just solved homelessness. No, you didn't, dude.
You just, you hid it.
Yeah, you shipped them over here. So then what's happened in North Town, a lot of them didn't leave, right?
Yeah.
And I'm like, believe it or not, I'm a nice guy. So I, I, the previous homeless people, like kind of pre-COVID, pre, uh, George Floyd, I kind of feel like there was like a shift that happened. Where I used to know the homeless people around there and I would talk to them and, you know, if it's hot outside, I'd give them a bottle of water. I knew him by name, say hi to him when I'm, you know, walking my dog, stuff like that. And a lot of the guys were straight up schizophrenic.
Yeah.
Like, there was one guy in particular that would tell me like, people are poisoning my cigarettes, I work for Obama, I gotta get back to DC, I'm with the FBI, stuff like that.
Yeah.
And he even gave me his real name and I looked him up on CaseNet just to make sure that he's not like a murderer or something. And he had trespassing, you know, stuff like that on his record, nothing violent. So anyways, I became friends with him, but those homeless guys were replaced by these new batch. The new batch of homeless people down there are like super sketch.
Yeah.
Where like.
Drugs and, yeah.
I live right by the library. There's a lady that masturbates publicly outside the library.
Wow.
For real, like outside of her clothes. And, um, screen, like you'll walk, you'll walk by with your kids.
The library right next to the school?
Yes. There's a lady out there screaming profanity on her phone, rubbing her pussy on the, yeah, it's crazy, dude. Guys that, you know, I'm a grown ass man and I got a big ass lab. My dog's like ninety pounds, walk my dog and there's guys staring at you like, like they wanna fuck you up. My wife had to call the police two weeks ago because she had a guy following her around. She was telling him, get, get away from him and he wouldn't get away from her. So she had to call the police and ask them to come, you know, get this guy away.
Dude, here in Gladstone, I've seen a huge influx of them, man. And from what I've heard, they made some type of a, place down Inglewood Road, I think it is, where they can stay or somehow get food.
Shelters, there's warming shelters and when it's hot or cold, they'll open up shelters.
Cause there's a ton of a man down by, by the gym I go to down there on Antioch, you know, by Big Biscuit and dude, I mean, some of them are just insane. I had one guy coming out, just trying to fight everybody out of the Dollar Tree right there, you know, screaming at people.
And so you and I are grown ass men. Imagine if you're a single mom, or if you're a twelve year old boy. That's not cool. Like, you don't wanna live in them.
There's a guy that I just seen not too close to my house, dude, walking around with a pair of scissors in his hands, just walking around, waiting at the bus stop right there.
The other day I was in front of, um, it's, the funny thing is it was in front of the police station, in between Dairy Queen and the police station. There was this dude that was attacking cars, like there were cars at the, stopping at the stoplight. And he would run up and punch their windows and throwing, throwing cups at their cars and, stuff like that to where, dude, it's like, once an area starts, like I started seeing signs of it. And then it's like flicking a light switch all of a sudden. So now I got shootings happening. You know, we had a cop murdered in broad daylight. You know, at four o'clock in the afternoon.
Yeah.
Couple of years ago at a, just a random stop because the guy had fake license plates and, I mean, it seems to like progress. But then like you mentioned, the Northeast earlier, and I've seen areas that will kind of like descend into like a dark place.
Northeast is bad right now.
It's getting better, I thought.
No, the homelessness?
Well, there's investors though that are buying properties and like fixing them up.
Yeah.
Like the property values there have skyrocketed.
Which is kind of an issue as well for some of the residents, because where do these residents go? But homelessness wise, no dude, I mean, I, because I know a lot of people down there, so I'm down there pretty frequently. I work down there.
I sell property down there. Lots of hookers and drug dealers.
I've been around that area, shit, pretty much almost my whole life. And just to see how bad it is, man. I mean, some of the camps I've seen,
Oh, yeah.
That are hidden away in the woods that I've drove past, like over there by Superflea and all that shit. I mean, dude, it's insane.
There's a whole city under, under the bridge. There's like a, there's a city.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's insane, man. I mean, it's, I, I just, I don't know what the, uh, cure to that problem is. I mean, to be honest with you, I don't know. I know mental illness plays a big factor, which is sad. Uh, I know I've read reports of a lot of people of sexual abuse become homeless. So, you know, it's like, what do we do? You know, how, how do we, how do we help these people without getting them hooked to where they never wanna get off of this help? Cause that's what I think it is half the time. I think that we, we don't give people a direction. You know, it's kind of like if we were to debate the, um, what's it called? The financial assistance and all, you know, like food stamp programs and all that stuff. It's like as if we hook them onto those programs and then don't give them an outlet to get out, you know, or give them stepping stones to get out. We're just like, hey, here you go. We wanna help you, but no real direction on making them better.
So the guy, the schizophrenic guy that I was friends with, his name is Virgil. And I, I talked to the police chief one day about this, because you know, it obviously during winter time gets super cold, summertime get a hundred degrees. I was worried about the guy, like his physical, I was worried about him literally dying on the street. I went and talked to the police chief and I was like, look, man, like this guy is, he's schizophrenic. I'm not a psychiatrist, but he's schizophrenic. Thinks he's a government agent. Like, where can we put this guy?
Yeah.
And he told, he told me, hey, man, there's nowhere for these people to go. He's like, there's no, we don't.
There's no like mental institutions that can help them or?
There's no resources for these people. And then when you, when you go about it from a municipal standpoint, so with the city, I actually helped get this passed, actually. Uh, we can't open like a homeless shelter because it requires staff. You have to have security, because you might have somebody come in there with a knife.
Yeah.
You might have somebody come in there that's a rapist. So they're like, we can't, like, we can't fund a shelter. But what we can do is like, if it's super cold outside or super hot outside, we put money into this fund that this local nonprofit organization books hotel rooms for them. So if it's ten degrees outside and the police were driving around or fire whoever, and they see people out living on the street, they would pick them up and say, hey, we're, we got a hotel room for you.
Do they even do that anymore? Cause I see cops passing by.
We do in North Town.
Homeless guys all the time and they don't, because dude, Antioch and fucking, uh, Vivian, it's bad right there, man. I mean, there's just homeless people all over.
I have a working theory that the closer to interstates and the closer to bus routes.
Oh, yeah.
Cause there are certain, as a Realtor, I go all over the whole metro. And there are parts of the metro where you can go, zero. You don't see it at all. And then there's other areas where it's like very concentrated. And my own observation is that it's the closer to an interstate, the closer to a bus line you are. I've even heard that there's municipalities that have gotten rid of the KCATAs bus lines for that reason.
Yeah. I think they're trying to do it here too.
In Gladstone?
I don't know about specifically in Gladstone, but I think in Kansas City, they're trying to actually get rid of that. Cause I, I was reading and I don't know if it was an article or somebody posted it, where they were trying to get rid of, they were trying to get rid of access to the metro. But I, I don't know. I, I can't speak on it just because I haven't read enough about it, but I thought they were trying to do that.
I think it's a housing issue too, man. Like there's just not enough houses available.
Yeah.
It's so hard to buy a house right now.
Were you saying the homelessness problem is that, 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 I mean, I think it's, we have a huge drug problem right now.
Yeah.
I think we have a huge mental illness problem. I mean, it's, and everything's so expensive right now too, you know? I mean, people are like, fuck it, I'll just live out on the street and fucking get my free meals and camp out.
So what do you think about the, uh, border situ- like the, because I was talking to my buddies I was golfing with the other day, because I, two of them are my good buddies and they're like on the left and I was asking them, I'm like, you know, as a Realtor, there's no houses available. Like where are these people gonna live, you know? And that's what, they told me, they're like, we're gonna build apartments everywhere and just fill apartment buildings essentially.
I don't know, I've battled, I've, I've been back and forth on the border stuff, man, because sometimes my libertarian mind's just like, fuck it, just let it be. Cause you know, they're, the libertarians are actually split a lot between the border issue. You have some that's just saying fucking borders don't work. We shouldn't just let everyone move wherever the fuck they want. I see their point on that, but then I also see the point of security, you know, who's all coming over.
Yeah.
But then, but then I could say, I mean, I could probably get more easily murdered or attacked by American citizen, you know what I mean? So I, I don't, I don't know, man. It's not good. I, I mean, all the, from the videos I've seen, I actually just watched one where they were, um, they just literally just ran past. I mean, they were fighting with National Guard, yeah.
Yeah, they like broke the fence down and.
Yeah, so I.
I've seen them too, where they're like not Hispanic people. They're like.
No, like a lot of Haitians, uh, I think it's, I think a lot of Southern, uh, Central Americans. Um, oh, is there, there probably is some of that. I mean, there's some incels that come over too probably, or what do they call it? Sleeper cells, not incels, sleeper.
Incels are like involuntarily celibate, that they're like guys that chicks won't fuck.
Okay, nevermind, not incels. They, they call them sleeper cells.
Sleeper cells. But, uh, I've talked to military people about that and they're like totally freaked out.
Yeah.
Cause they're like, there's, there's videos you can see that. See, it depends on what algorithm you're stuck in. So you assume that other people are seeing what you're seeing, but they're not, but there's videos where.
But, but I battle with what's real. What am I watching? And that, I think that dude, is what really, i- i- and compared from like two to three years ago till now. Because I've been diving really into this shit, I wanna say since, I think I started pretty, going pretty hard on like trying to educate myself, trying to do as much research as I can, like in twenty sixteen. I wanna say maybe a little earlier, but definitely ramped up during like twenty eighteen, twenty seventeen. Uh, but now dude, I'm to the point to where I don't know what to fucking believe, man.
There's no objective reality in you.
And, and it's like, because I got this side who's manipulating shit. I've got this side that's manipulating shit. And then I'm trying to find independent journalists, you know, and then I'm wondering if they're even independent or if they're, if they've got their hands in that shit too. I don't know. It's like all a psyops, man. It's fucking scary. I, I don't know. I, I don't know what to say. It's like with the border. I don't even know what to fucking say. I don't. I think we're honestly getting people from countries that are failing. That's pretty much what it is. I mean, these countries are not taking care of their people. A majority of those people just want jobs and a home. And they see America as their outlet, so they're trying to get up here. And in the mix of that, there's bad people in there too, you know, so what do we do?
I'm always thinking about housing. I just don't know where to put people.
Yeah.
Like I can't even find houses for Americans that live here. And then you wanna like bring more, like, I don't know, it's wild.
There's definitely enough land in America. I think the point of they're controlling how much is getting built. I mean, if you go through Kansas, I mean, you'll see, we got a lot of fucking land. But when you have organizations saying, no, we're only gonna build fucking apartments and not houses, yeah, it's gonna be a problem.
Well, it's, it's not a conspiracy theory. It's public. They talk about these walkable cities, fifteen minute cities are called. They're trying to get rid of vehicles, of, of gasoline vehicles.
Yeah, weird, man.
And so if they, if you live in an apartment and you work from home remotely and the grocery store is across the street, then you don't need a car and then they'll save the planet.
And if, and if people wanna live that way, that's fine, but don't stop the others from building. You know what I mean? Like if you wanna. You know what I mean? Like if you want to build that, let others build this.
I don't want to live in that environment.
Yeah.
So I will pluck myself out and so the community I live in, that's the direction they're going.
But that's the sad part, Wes, is that you're able to do this.
Correct.
And some families are not because they're stuck. And this is what pisses me off sometimes about, uh, when politicians do things. They, I feel a lot of the times they think of themselves instead of the people. I'm able to do this, so you should be able to do this. Well, tell the single mother that gets paid thirty thousand a year to just. Oh yeah, if you don't like, you could just uproot. They're not going to say that to them. But they're going to implement things to where it's going to affect her life. And now she's stuck being miserable because she has to, she doesn't have anywhere else to go.
So you, you just brought up like something I was going to bring up to you today is like housing. Your house. Is doubled in value since you bought it.
I've seen.
It's doubled in value, like your house is doubled.
Which is insane to me, dude, because, uh, fifteen years ago, this house would have probably been worth like fucking nothing, dirt, dirt cheap. And that's the scary part too. And, and I want to move. I want to get the fuck out of here, man. Like it's just, it's getting too much. It's scaring me. I'm fortunate that in our neighborhood, it hasn't been too bad. But when I say too bad, we still have had two shootings over here. One that almost hit my fucking house. It hit my neighborhood in front. Yeah, they were shooting from that parking lot over there when they were building all that shit.
Wow.
Some shootout happened. I had one, a shooting that just happened in my backyard not too long ago.
What?
A kid was back there. I heard a gunshot. I had all the windows open. It was like a really nice day, like a couple of months back. We had like a random ass nice day. I heard a shot and I can, I'm not saying I'm the best at it, but I can pretty much hear the difference between a, a firecracker.
The shooting we had, I thought it was firecrackers. I did.
And I'm not saying I'm right all the time, but I'm not one of those people on the Ring app going, did you hear gunshots like every fucking day?
Yeah.
I heard it, uh, kid starts running down the street. If I hear a pop and then I see running and then.
Shooting.
He drops his, what I thought was a gun. Now it was kind of far because I was looking through my backyard. He was on the other side, but he dropped this thing that looked like a gun to me. Picks it up. As soon as I seen that, I tell the girls, get into the room, you know? I go grab my gun real quick. I go by the door to make sure this dude isn't going to fucking kill my dog or something who's back there. And he's jumping fences, gets into my yard. I look out and I'm like, fuck dude, should I show myself? This motherfucker's going to know where I live. These cops aren't going to catch him. I already fucking know that. And then I look out and I'm just like, hey, get the fuck out of my yard. And he just runs and jumps the fence and takes off. You know, of course she's on the phone with the cops, calls them. They show up like fucking six or not six, like. Ten minutes later, I think they show up, which is surprising for Gladstone. They're usually pretty on top of it, but. I never hear anything about that. I actually tried contacting them, but we've been playing this phone tag game forever. Um, and then we had some crazy lady run to our door at five in the morning, the day after Thanksgiving. Saying that she was going to get killed by some guy, you know?
If you, if you left, where would you go?
I don't know, man. And that, that's brings up the discussion of housing prices. I don't know where I can go, man. Like I can't afford, like I could afford them, but I don't want to, I don't want to be house poor. I'm locked in at a three percent on this house. So it's like, where the fuck am I going to go? I'm going to get a seven, eight percent, ten per, I don't, I don't know what it is right now.
That's one reason why we have a housing shortage. There's not enough listings is because there's people like you and people like me frankly, that have low interest rates.
Yeah.
That unless you are hyper motivated to move, like I'm about to move and it makes no financial sense whatsoever. It's absolute, if you just looked at the economics of it, you'd be like, you're an idiot for leaving. I just don't like where I'm at, so I'm motivated to do it.
And dude, I read, it was like in twenty twenty-three, average home prices were three hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars, dude.
Well, here locally, it's, it's less. It's about.
And this is average nationwide.
Yeah, here it's about three thirty, three thirty-five.
And then they said in twenty twenty-three, the average mortgage payment was twenty-six hundred dollars at an eight percent interest rate. But they did say in twenty twenty-four, it's looking like it's coming down. I think they are saying it's a six percent average. Oh, did they?
They lie.
I've seen a lot of comments on one of the videos I watched, they were saying that.
I've gotten very cynical with the news.
And this is nationwide, not our area.
I've gotten to the point now where I've realized that what they're telling people on the news is to project. Positive vibes essentially. Like, so they were telling us, RE/MAX agents in November. That by this time, we'd already have like multiple rate cuts, that they would be like tremendously going down. And they're not. I mean, I think they've tried to project positivity out there, but it's bullshit. I don't really.
What do you think the interest rate is going to be in twenty twenty-four?
So the rates where they're at now, they were at that same level when I started selling real estate twenty years ago in two thousand and four.
Oh, really?
They were artificially low. Like when they got down, dude, my house is a two point two five percent. That will never happen again, ever. Yeah, I had a fifteen, I locked, is a fifteen year note, so I got a lower rate. We'll never see that again. It's artificially low.
Why is that? Why won't we see that again?
The economy was like tanking, so they lowered rates artificially. And just like I keep mentioning, like, I feel like I'm repeating myself, but there's always unintended consequences. Where the government will try to fix something and they end up fucking up a whole bunch of things. So now we have all these people that locked in at low rates and they don't want to move. So there's people like that own a house that might be a starter home.
Yeah.
For some single mom that wants to buy a house, but you're not going to sell your, the house that you bought. And maybe you only intended to live here for five, six, seven years. Now you might live here for twenty.
That's what I thought. I thought with this house, I shouldn't even sold my first house. Fuck, that house is worth ridiculous amount of money where it's at. And I mean, I thought I'd be here for maybe four or five years and then just move to the actual house I want. Fuck no, now I feel like at the point where I'm kind of locked in because of like you said, that interest rate.
Generally, people like yourself, uh, housing affordability is terrible right now. Cause like rates are high and prices are high.
And you don't see it coming down.
No, not for a while.
You see it going up or staying stagnant?
The reason it's not going to come down is supply and demand. There's no supply. There's no housing supply. The only way, right now there's like this many buyers and this many sellers. So unless the number of sellers somehow tremendously increased, then there's not going to be, it's, prices are not going to come down.
No one's selling because everybody's feeling the effects of the economy.
And guess what happens if rates went down right now?
Demand would go.
Prices would even skyrocket even worse. It would just make it even worse.
Yeah.
The, the people I really feel bad for right now are first time home buyers. That's why I brought up your house. Cause I work for, I actually have a client that lives right down the street here in an apartment that's trying to buy her first house. And it's shocking. Like when you look at a house for two twenty-five, they're not very good.
No.
It used to be, not that long ago, for two twenty-five, I can sell you like a really nice respectable house.
Yeah.
Now, no. And even in upper price ranges, like you look at a house that's four fifty.
Yeah.
And you think like, wow, that must be some mansion. No, not really. It's like a, it's like a regular house.
People all the time. The first house I bought was back in twenty thirteen. I paid a hundred grand.
Your house in Liberty.
Do you remember that house?
Yeah.
Hundred grand.
Yeah.
I mean, insane. I think, I think last time I looked at, uh, Zillow, it was like, yeah, three something. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Insane, man. And like I said, in this house, probably fifty thousand back in the day.
So, so here's what's into, like if you're a first time buyer, uh, trying to buy your first house, you got high rates, prices are high. And even what you're buying is like not nice.
Yeah.
And, but that being said, like people that like you and I that already own a house. We kind of can counter it because when you sell your house, you have like a huge chunk of equity. That you can throw around and be like, hey, I got.
Yeah, but I'm buying high too.
Correct.
That's the shitty part.
Yep, that's correct. Yeah. But at least you have the equity. Like if you sell, you're like, oh, here's a hundred grand that.
Yeah.
Drop a big old deposit on, on it or whatever, but.
And then like you said, it's hard even finding anything right now, man. I mean, you know, because my next home, I want it to be, I hope forever home. Because I'm tired of moving. I've only moved twice, but well, three times, but it, it, I don't see much on the market that's appealing.
Yeah.
Now, you know, that's not a new build.
When you do, there's ten offers.
Yeah, yeah. And then you're going to pay twenty, thirty grand over asking.
Dude, I'll plug myself real quick because like that's why people need a good agent. Because if you're in, I'll give you an example. Last week I showed one of my clients a property. And it, the listing agent priced it too low on purpose and to like create like a bidding war. So I contacted the seller's agent. I don't know her. She works at a different company. And I said, hey, you know, we're writing an offer on this property. What's your, how are you going to handle offers? She goes, well, we're not going to accept an offer until it's been on the market for twenty-four hours, meaning like we're not going to accept anything till tomorrow. So I told my buyer, like, here's what we're going to do. We're going to write a strong offer. It's going to expire tonight at ten P M. As is over list price is like an amazing offer. And we, so sellers agents have to present all offers. So even though she told me, we're not going to sign anything till tomorrow. I stuck an offer in front of her and was like, you have to present this to your client and it expires at ten P M. So he can let this expire and wake up tomorrow and this thing's gone, or he can sign it and end it.
Yeah.
And my client got the house. If we would have waited till the next day, there would have been ten, twelve, fifteen offers on the property.
Yeah.
So it's important that people realize like the market that we're in right now. Like make sure that you have an agent that is experienced and knows what they're doing. Otherwise you're going to get your teeth kicked in by somebody like me negotiating against you.
Yeah.
So that, that's some real talk.
No, I completely agree, man.
People are like, oh, I'm going to hire my, the, the person that works at Supercuts that just got their license two months ago and then they're negotiating against me and.
Yeah. I've, I've heard there's going to be a dip here in the agents here pretty soon.
There will be.
Twenty percent dip or something like that.
There will be, and honestly, that's.
Because there's house, there's no more, there's no houses to sell.
That's a good thing though, honestly. Like in any industry, sometimes there's too many people.
Trim the fat.
Yeah. I mean, the weak, I mean, it sounds horrible, uh, for me to say this, but like the bad agents shouldn't be agents.
Yeah.
Like go, you know, go find another career.
But then it also fucks the ones that are up and coming, which is sad too, you know?
That's true.
The ones that are trying to, they're trying to create their, uh, network, you know, the, of people, you know, gain their client list. You know, they're not able to because there's nothing to sell out there and they might've been a great agent.
That's true.
You know?
You know what I did?
What?
When I was in my twenties, the market tanked. Like I was in my twenties when two thousand and eight crash happened.
Man, I remember that shit.
I got a second job, bro.
Yeah.
I worked at Sears and was selling appliances, like washers, dryers, refrigerators, stuff like that. Because otherwise I couldn't pay my bills.
Yeah.
But I never quit real estate. And then what happened was one day I had a client that, a real estate client that was like, hey. Let's go look at houses on Saturday. So I called Sears and was like, hey, man, I'm, I'm not coming in Saturday. I gotta go show property. And they're like, no, you're coming in here and peace out. Like I literally like took my little Sears badge off. Threw it on the table and just from there took back off. But the agents that really want it, that's what I'm getting at. They're not going to quit.
Right.
Like if you really are laser focused and you know this, you're in, you know, you're in martial arts. Like if you're dedicated, like someone can beat the fuck out of you and you show up the next day.
Yeah.
You just don't quit.
Oh, yeah. No, I totally agree, man. It, it'll weed out the ones that are just doing it for, you know, to say they're an agent. Oh, I'm an agent or you know, shit, half the time, you know, everybody's, you know, just doing it for some type of TikTok video or something.
Bro, I don't get that. There's people I know that make a lot of money that are, um, they're basically like social media influencers.
Yeah, I've seen some of them, some real estate people on Instagram doing stuff like that, which more power to them.
Yeah, it's not my vibe.
Like you said, some are just doing it the half-ass lazy way, man, where they just, they want the title. They don't want to do the homework behind it, you know? Or the, or the legwork behind it. So.
I personally, um, I mean, I work at RE/MAX. We're like a solid company. Like I respect those, my coworkers. But there are, um, brokerages that have different structures, the way that the agents pay their broker. And so it's very simple to understand. I'm not going to name names, but there's companies that only charge the agent a fee if they sell a house. And the fee is only like two hundred bucks. So there's, there's companies I could work for where if I only sell two houses a year. I can go six months without selling a property and never pay fees.
Yeah.
Where I work, I have a giant ass bill that's essentially like a mortgage payment that I have due every month. So like you have to be hustling or else, so if you ever see agents that will go from like a RE/MAX. Like you'll see this year, I guarantee you, like on your social media, you'll see agents go from RE/MAX to some. Random ass brokerage. And that's because they're getting their teeth kicked in and they can't pay their monthly bill.
They're kind of coming out of their personal money.
So they're going to some brokerage where you can go six months and no fees.
Is there any added benefits of being in what you're in? I mean.
A hundred times, yes. So the reason.
I guess the drive to push you to get, you know, to sell.
We have training, we have technology that other people don't have access to. Like I literally have like, we call them tools in our tool belt. Like I have tools that other, if you hire somebody at a different company, they literally don't have access to the things that I have access to.
That's good.
And a lot of it's just training.
Yeah.
Like I'm constantly, and I've done this for twenty years, but I'm still learning. I'm still. Cause everything's always changing. That's one thing I like about my job. It's not boring.
Yeah.
It's always, dude, just yesterday I was at a home inspection, uh, sold a house. I worked for the buyer. And the only thing I was concerned about at this home inspection was the sewer line. I'm like, the roof's fine, the foundation's fine. So during the inspection, the guy checks the sewer line. He's like, it's good. So I'm all sweet, we're good, we're good. Well, I'm out on the deck chilling. Inspector starts looking at the roof, peels up the shingles. Bro, there's wood shingles on the base layer. They laid comp roof right over the wood roof with no barrier, no anything, bro. So like, if you're just sitting there looking at the roof, you're like, yeah, it looks fine, you know?
Mm-hmm. I've seen some roofs with like four layers underneath it, man. Just ridiculous.
So like that client, um, just to, actually before I walked in the door here this morning, I just negotiated, he's getting a brand new roof put on the house. So.
Yeah.
That's, that also illustrates like the importance of a home inspection. Cause even somebody like me.
And have a good inspector too, because there was even a couple of things on this house that the home inspector I had did good, but missed definitely some things.
What?
Uh, I think insulation wise, they missed. Uh, I don't know if they look for that.
In the attic?
Yeah, there was no insulation up there, man. I mean, I, I ended up putting insulation in, rented one of those machines at Home Depot.
Yeah, the blower.
Trying to get it up to, yeah, and putting the rulers up, trying to get it up to, um, what is it? The state standard or whatever. Um, I, my flu for the, um, for the.
Furnace and water heater.
Furnace and water heater that was completely rusted out that I went up and changed out.
It was like leaking in the attic or something?
Pretty much. And I didn't see it until I got the roof replaced. My roofer actually, uh, pointed it out when he was replacing the.
Yeah, they'll leak around the boot sometimes and water gets penetrates in there.
Just, you know, how it goes up and then shoots up. It was just completely rusted out. Uh, I know, I don't think they checked for this, but I did have a, um, water line or a sewer line collapse.
Ooh.
Yeah. So I had to dig up the whole floor. And this was after I laid the fucking tile.
Did you do a, um.
No.
When I first, when I first started selling real estate, it didn't exist.
Really?
That technology.
Yeah.
Like now we have cameras.
I ran a camera through the main from a different company.
Uh huh.
But I didn't run it from there.
Oh, you know what's interesting? You say that?
Yeah.
That's common.
Yeah.
Both houses that I've owned, I've had to have them cut my basement floor out because old houses.
Cast iron. Yeah.
Well, they were like, they're like this big.
Yeah.
And then when they calcify, like the hole keeps shrinking.
Mine was actually collapsed. So when they dug it up, there was just gallons of water. It stunk so bad. Uh, luckily it wasn't, um, from the toilet, because I'm right there in the middle. That's just from the sink.
Yep.
Uh, but, but sink and the washing machine. So it's just that soap nasty mildewy smell. But yeah, they cut it up and they ended up replacing it with like a big four inch PVC pipe.
Houses have little tiny drain lines because they didn't have like high capacity washing machines and dishwashers like we do now. They used, actually they used less water in their house. So those little lines were fine. But then if you hook up like. If you like flush the toilet and you got the dishwasher running and the washing machine, like water will start like shooting out of the floor.
That's what happened. That's what I was noticing. But that too, and I was just hearing a lot of gargling up in the kitchen sink.
Yep.
And I was like, man, you get that kind of that sewer smell, you know, from it.
Common on old houses.
What is that, man? And I thought it was just old pipes. You know, I've heard of different techniques of putting like these sent things down or crushed ice cubes or such shit like that, or, uh, lemon peels and stuff like that.
No, they gotta take a concrete saw and cut the floor.
They did. They cut it up and had to replace it. Since then I haven't had any issues. The only thing that sucks about old houses is, uh, uh, the root problem from trees. I gotta snake my, uh, lines once a year.
Yeah, that's common too.
Which I use razor router, which they come in pretty good. That, who wrote a router? Oh my God, dude, they're ridiculous.
Cracks me up is like, like your house is doubled in value. So I know you're not like saying, you're not like anti-home ownership. But I do have people sometimes where like those problems pop up and they're like, fuck this house. I never even want to own a house, stuff like that and.
I mean, dude, don't get me wrong. I've had headaches, you know, I've, I've been upset like fuck, like, because I came from a house that was almost, that was built in nineteen ninety-five. To a house that was built in nineteen sixty-five.
Yeah.
You know, so yeah, I mean, it was a shock value. It was like, oh, fuck, you know, I, I didn't know, you know, all this shit, you know, could go wrong. But I, and don't get me wrong, I've had, I'm almost where I was pissed, fucking throwing shit, you know, just like, fuck, I just spent, you know, I had to pay like two grand to update my uh breaker box and my outside meter that was all fucked up and it was, looked like poltergeists in this house. So yeah, that shit sucks. And then that was right after I just replaced the fucking uh sewage line. So you know, that was another grand. Uh, so I've have had those moments, but now I try to look at it as, it's a learning lesson, man. I mean, I kinda know all how all this shit's fixed. Yeah, it's an investment. Uh, at least it's all new now. At least when I sell the house, I know it's all good. Uh, and that, and you know, I do a lot of stuff myself, so I've learned a lot, a lot of stuff, you know, how to do stuff, which in the end will help me with my children when they get older and they don't have to worry about hiring somebody or, you know, I can kinda help them, hey, this is your problem instead of having to figure it out like I did, you know? Thank God for YouTube though. YouTube University, man. They walked me through a lot of shit, so.
Yeah, I'm done with old houses, man. I've owned two houses that are a hundred years old and I used to do a lot of D I Y stuff. And then I got to a point where I had the realization of like, I'm trying to like save money by doing this myself. But doing all this work, at the same time, I could be out selling real estate, making money.
Yeah.
So now I've gotten to the point where I just sell and then hire people to do it all for me.
Fix it all for you.
And it costs more, obviously, but my time is valuable and I'd rather.
Well, especially in what you do. I just work a regular nine to five, so I mean.
Where do you work at?
I'm a machinist. So I work out in Alata.
I think, did you used to work at the uh car plant, right? For a period of time? You didn't?
No, but everybody in that neighborhood did. Those all Ford employees that lived around me cuz it was right down the street.
Yeah.
But no, I've been a machinist for a long time. I broke away, did some project management work for a construction company and then just kinda went back to what I was doing, you know?
You get good benefits and stuff doing that?
Nah, man.
No?
Nah, yeah, I think the only time you find good benefits is at union shops, you know, it's pretty much. But no, dude, it's ridiculous, man, insurance right now. I think there was one point, uh, I was paying a hundred and seventy dollars a week on health insurance, a week.
Geez.
Yeah.
And you're like young and healthy too.
Yeah, I know. And that, well, that's what I explained to the company. I said, this insurance plan is set up for some dude who's sixty years old. I'm never gonna meet a sixty-five hundred dollar deductible. What, what am I supposed, am I supposed to break my arm every year or, you know? We all supposed to get sick every year to meet this? I mean, literally paying that much money out of pocket. And then on top of that, I was getting bills from when I was going to the doctors or uh checkups for the kids and stuff like that, you know? I think yearly checkups were free. But anytime they would get sick or, you know, something would happen, you know, I'm paying straight out of pocket.
This other thing I see happening right now, which is, which is wild is like inflation.
Yeah.
Like, people are getting pay raises, right? Like my wife, for example, like she's a school teacher. And last year they were like, you get a five percent pay raise, but the price of everything has gone up.
Yeah.
Way more than five percent.
Oh, yeah. Cost of living to the economy? Yeah, it's like a huge imbalance right now.
So essentially they're like, it's like gaslighting people to where the government's like, the economy's great. People are working, they're getting pay raises. But then everyone I talk to, there's this weird imbalance right now where, like I make pretty good money and my wife doesn't. She's a school teacher. But combined, like we're, we should be like middle class. But we're not like, we're not wealthy by any means.
I tell people that all the time, man. I was like, you know, what, why is it? And thi- and this correlates to a bunch of underlying problems. This is what's causing it. Parents are having to work. One, both parents have to work for one. I don't know too many people that both parents are not working. At least, and well, even that too, like how many parents are still together too. But either way, two individuals in the home have to work. And then on top of that, you see so many people having to do side hustles, uh little selling stuff here and there or picking up part-time jobs. Which is causing, one, the, the kids are raising themselves because they're working fifty hours a week. Uh, they're not able to be there for everything, you know? We wonder why these kids are going crazy and, you know, doing shit and, you know, getting into trouble and stuff like that. Well, parents are having to work a lot, man, just to provide, you know? I mean.
You've heard all the conspiracy theories about that, right?
Mm-mm.
There's people that claim that's like intentional, like the, the feminist movement and having women go to work.
What comes out of this?
The government raises your kids instead of your, your wife essentially.
And so they're, they're creating votes and people who are relying on the system.
Creating robot kids or programming them, like we were previously talking about. But like people bring up like, remember that show Married with Children with Al Bundy?
I think so. It sounds familiar.
You don't remember Al Bundy?
That's names house familiar. I don't know if I've seen it.
Okay, there was a show in like the, I guess it was like probably the early nineties. And the guy was like kinda crass, you know, he's like a Homer Simpson type character. Homer Simpson's another example, actually.
Yeah.
Where like Homer Simpson worked at a nuclear power plant, but he lived in a two-story house with a two-car garage. His wife stayed home, raised three kids. Same thing, like Al Bundy was a shoe salesman. He worked at the shopping mall and sold shoes.
Yeah.
But he had like a nice house, night, you know, two-car garage.
I've always wondered that, man. Or the guy that works at the grocery store has a nice big hun- like.
And nowadays, like even people I know that make, you know, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars are not rich.
Yeah.
Like.
Well, they said a hundred and fifty thousand dollars is what's comfortable now. You know how hard it is to get a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a guy that works for an actual company?
But what's interesting is I have friends that are rich, that are, that make a lot of money. And they're doing fucking great right now in this economy. Like the stock market is like exploding. So if you have, if you make good money and you have money in the stock market, you don't give a shit about the price of gasoline or the price of eggs. Like it has no effect on you.
Yeah.
They're insulated. But the middle-class people and the poor people and like people trying to buy their first house are just getting curb stomped. They're just getting their shit kicked in.
Yeah.
So.
I know, which scares me cuz when does the bubble pop at some point?
Will it? Or are we just being enslaved?
I mean, I think they make it enough to where it's comfortable enough for people. They give enough comfortability for people to where like you're feeling the effect, but life is too cushioned right now to even uprise or say anything about it, you know what I mean? Or do anything about it. I mean, think about it, TV, phone, food. I mean, it's all just creating lazy, you know, people.
Well, they say that, like the poorest American is still like in the top, what, two percent in the world? If you look at like globally.
Oh, like poverty here compared to.
Yeah, cuz even if you're poor in the United States, you got a cell phone.
Oh, yeah.
You go to Taco Bell.
Yeah, I thought, I've always wondered that too. People have always claimed like, no, don't get me wrong, there's rough areas. You grew up in poverty. But yeah, definitely uh compared to other countries, we definitely have it a lot better than, than them, but.
You know what really freaks me out is uh digital currency. You ever gone down that rabbit hole?
Yeah, like when I was looking at the crypto and stuff like that and how they were real against it because it didn't align with the dollar.
Well, if it's government regulated, cuz just thinking like big picture, if we end up with like a digital currency.
Oh, you're talking about where there's no actual paper money at all.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, how your funds can be controlled.
So if we don't own houses and we live in apartments and we don't have cars and our currency's digital.
Or if you have cars that can shut off.
Yeah. Then people like myself that are outspoken and like consider whatever a thought criminal or whatever.
Credit score system.
Dude, they could just shut off. They could be like, hey, you have no utilities now. Hey, you're, you're, you have, we just erased your bank accounts frozen. Your cell phone shut off. They can just delete people.
Well, a lot of people, and this is my issue about conspiracy, like when people look at conspiracy theorists is that, that even that name, I'm tired of even how much they've scrutinized that name because how could you not be conspiratorial when the government has given you a list? There's lists you can look up online of how many conspiracies have finally came out to be true, you know? From the Gulf of Tonkin to, I mean, you name it, you know, I, there has been, I, I wish I had the list.
So there's people that are so stupid that they think that it just stopped.
You know?
People like, oh, that, that's in the past. It doesn't happen anymore.
Didn't happen anymore. All of a sudden, we live in some Goldilocks, you know, utopian universe right now, yeah. They still, they love us now. It's like, oh, okay, guys, yeah. But, but no, I like, you should be uh skeptical of the people who are running your city, your country, you know, cuz like you've presented, there's a lot of shit going on behind the scenes that we don't see, right?
There's stuff that goes on that not only do you not see, but the people that do see it are scared to even talk about it, myself included.
Yeah, we were just talking on the break.
I have giant.
It is scary. I mean, cuz look, your job can be affected. I know from doing this podcast right now, my job can be affected, my, my family's lives can be affected. My thing is, is that I just feel like, um, I feel like how you felt when you ran for the councilman position. You were like, man, I'm a person that wants to not just speak about it. I wanna do something about it. So I felt like, man, I've always loved podcasting. I wanna create a space where we can talk about this. You know, I'm not doing anything new. There's a lot of them out there. But at least in my area, I can get people to be vocal and put this out there and help people understand things. But I know the repercussions could come, you know, from, from doing this. And it is scary, man. But at the same time, what am I supposed to do? Just fall in line with everybody else?
That's what most people do.
I know, but dude, it, it, it's like a ticking in the back of my head, just digging at me.
I appreciate you for doing that. And I don't know if you can relate to this, but like I had people actually very close to me that told me not to do this.
Yeah, but also having had death threats either put in my mailbox, you know what I mean? That could.
Might.
Then that's what, that's what worries me. So I don't, I can't even say, hey, I'm gonna do this forever. I'm doing this as long as I can. But when my family starts getting affected by that, I don't know how I'm gonna feel about that. I don't have the money to hire security or, you know, put myself somewhere where I can't be, you know, um, affected, you know, at this moment, you know, but.
So see if you relate to this, like as a parent, here's, like I had people told me, don't go on the podcast. Or they're like, if you do, just, I'm un, I'm physically unable to do this, but people are like, filter yourself. Like, don't speak openly.
This podcast?
Yes. Yeah, people were like, you have no, there's no upside to you doing this. Like just, why are you even doing this? Like, you could, you know?
Why are you?
Here's why. I'm seeing if you relate this, if this strikes you at all. I have two sons. My sons, I'm so freaked out by what the future holds for them.
Yep.
I think every day I want to leave Easter eggs for them. When they grow up, I want them to look back and be like, our dad like stood up.
Yeah, and did, and tried, at least. That's how I feel too, man, you know, especially with having two girls, man, you know, it's, it scares me, you know? And I don't know how long I'm gonna be around for, but I do hope that one day they can look at these, you know, cuz I keep all these even on a personal hard drive, you know, if they were to happen to be taken down. And it's kind of my video journal to them because I want them to see that, hey, my dad didn't align himself. He just stood up for what he believed was morally right for everybody, you know? Cuz that's my intent, dude. I don't give a fuck what you look like, what your religion is, your race, your gender. I don't fucking care, dude. All I want is for everyone to leave each other alone and just live your life, man. That's it. That's all I want. Nothing, I, I don't think that's a, a lot to ask for, right?
I believe in uh, I always respected Martin Luther King Junior. And if you actually read what he wrote, he's like a right-wing ru- like a Republican now. Cuz he would say like, you know, treat people not based on the color of their skin, but their character, like who they are as a person. And nowadays, we're taught the opposite.
And look at how conspir- conspiratorial they are. Even to this day, I believe Martin Luther King was assassinated by fucking CIA. I, that's my opinions. I know people may disagree, but uh him, uh Malcolm X was very, yeah, JFK. Malcolm X spoke a lot about how, you know, there's a lot of psy-op shit going on, you know what I mean? I mean, he, he was really big for the right to bear arms. Uh, that, we were just talking about that earlier, about that uh Smith guy on uh councilman for North Kansas City, about how at the end of that meeting, like this dude through the whole time, everyone's just pretty, you know, calm, talking about, you know, what I think was just dumb shit the entire time. But um, whatever, that, that's what that area wants to focus on, that's fine. I think if they took a poll on people in that area, there would be a, probably a lot different ideas on what's actually important and what's not.
You'd be surprised.
Really? That's sad.
It's a nutcase area.
I can see why you wanna get the fuck out of here.
Yeah.
Um, but like they start talking about the shooting that happened, which happened in, you said in front of your house.
Yeah.
And this guy, like, I don't know what it is with the gun stuff, but people just start freaking the fuck out and like just getting so emotional. Starts banging on the table, talking about how we gotta do something about this.
What are you gonna do about it?
All this shit. It's like, dude, I was looking up, like, there's like, and I might be wrong on these numbers, but there's like ten thousand gun laws federally or some shit and like twenty to fifty thousand state or like I said, I don't have those numbers in detail, but go look them up. Um, I don't understand what more laws you're gonna pass in order to get this to work. To me, this just sounds like more of a large Band-Aid to an underlying problem, you know, which is one, a culture problem, a mental health problem, a drug problem. I mean, there's just all, all these problems that are leading up to people fucking shooting each other, you know?
Yeah.
I mean, just like, I don't know what the backstory was with the North Kansas City shooting.
I don't either. I don't know who those guys were, what their beef was with each other.
Kids or was it adults?
The two guys that were arrested were adults, young adults, I should say. I mean, they were young men. They were, they were adults. Um, I think they said though, don't quote me on this cuz honestly, I should be following it, but I'm not cuz I'm, cuz I'm getting the fuck out of there, honestly. So I kinda just zoned out. But there, I think there was like five people shooting.
Oh, really?
Yeah. So dude, you were talking about the guy shot in your yard. I'll tell you the story real quick. Like, I was literally, it was like a beautiful day outside. I was barbecuing in the backyard, had just put burgers on the grill. Like I had just put them on there and walked inside. And my, I heard pop, 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 pop. And the neighborhood I live in, kids throw firecrackers, right? They've even thrown them at me, like when I've been walking down the street, like a, a car will, I mean, it's like Trailer Park Boys, that show.
Yeah.
Like a car will pull up and they'll fucking chuck like a thing of Black Cats, right?
Yeah.
So my wife goes, was that like a shoot, like what just happened? Was that a shooting? I was like, no, it's fireworks, it's firecrackers.
Yeah.
So I go back outside to flip the burgers over. You know, I lift the lid, sitting there flipping them. And I have a privacy fence, so I can't see through the fence. And I hear this guy run up to the other side of the privacy fence. So he was like six feet away from me, just on the other side of the fence, yelling, help, help, help. A car pulls up, he jumps in the car, peels off going like seventy miles per hour. And that's when I'm like, what the, like what the fuck is this? So I go back inside, my wife was like, this guy just ran through our front yard, jumped in a truck and got the fuck out of here. She's like, something bad is, is happening. So unlike you, like you like grabbed a gun and were like securing your family, my dumb ass, I, dude, I cut a cigar, go out front. I'm like a Missouri man, like they call Florida man, you know? If there's like a tornado warning, I'll like go outside and I'm like, where's the tornado? Like looking around. So I go outside, I'm in the front yard, I'm like smoking a cigar and there's cops running up and down the streets with AR fifteens. Dude, this one car, unmarked, uh, I don't know what type of agent he was, but he was in a Jeep Cherokee, comes flying like seventy miles per hour in a twenty mile per hour zone, almost hits another car, almost jumps the curb.
Damn.
He jumps out like wearing khakis and has like a bulletproof vest on, but he's wearing like dress clothes.
Yeah.
Pops his trunk, grabs an AR fifteen, he's running around. Then I see all these people come from the back of the school, like down this alleyway, like as a huge group, and everyone's face was white. And there were guys like on the phone, like grown men, like our age that like looked like they'd just seen a ghost. And still at this point, I wa- I guess I was in denial looking back on it cuz I still thought it was fireworks. So I start taking pictures and I was on social media. I did a Facebook Live and I'm like, I don't know what the fuck is going on, but like there's cops everywhere with AR fifteens. So I'm just sitting there like a reporter, like filming. Then I start getting contacted by actual reporters that were like, you're on the scene. I'm like, yeah, I live here. So they're like, can we use your pictures and video for the news? Cuz like we're headed there, but like you're on the scene. I'm like, sure. So then I'm getting caught, people are like, you're on the news, all this, all this shit. I had no idea what was happening.
Yeah.
So then the reporter shows up and she's like, will you uh come talk to us on camera? And I don't trust reporters at all. So I went inside and told my wife, I go, I'm gonna go talk to this lady. And I didn't know her. And I said, if it gets, I'm like, I'm expecting it to, like her to try something on me. And so I was interviewing with her and I was, and I was asking her, I'm like, what have you, like what happened here? And at that time, she was like, there's people at the hospital that were shot and this and that. And um, so they're rolling the camera and she's asking me questions about what, what I saw, what happened. But then at the end, she tried to make it a, she was like trying to make a gun control type of situation where she's like, do you feel safe in your neighborhood? What can be done? Is this kid, you know, after the Crown Center incident, the Super Bowl parade and now this, like, do you feel safe in our community? And I literally told her like, hey, I'm not getting, I'm just here to talk about what I saw. Like I'm not getting political. And they literally turned the camera off.
Oh, they did? Oh, my god.
And they edited, I mean, they edited the video to where they took her question out and me saying that out. But like the minute I said that, they were like click. And then they interviewed some other guy.
Who was this?
Uh, Channel forty-one reporter. And she, she's just doing her job. But then she, the funny thing is though, they interviewed like some younger gentleman down the street and they got him. They asked him the same question. I could tell cuz they interviewed him and he's like, I'm not safe here. We have to do something about the, you know, so.
Well, the problem is, is they want views, man. That's all it is. They want clicks. So they're just going with the trends right now.
No, I think it's pushing an agenda.
That too.
No, I think they literally have an agenda.
But I think the agenda is to get views and clicks. I mean, think about it, there's confrontation on that agenda. People are gonna watch, you know, from both sides. Cuz how many people on both sides are watching that same news, you know, just to get upset and riled up about it.
So then. So then I got a lot of friends that are police officers and family members. And if you talk to the police officer community, they're demoralized. Uh, they'll tell you like the prosecutors are. You know, leftists, they're hired based on their politics. So we have the situation right now where if you're a cop. They'll, like I get told stories where I live, where true story, they're like, we'll arrest some guy at Harris Casino with like a giant sack of meth. Like a big ass bag of meth. And then a week later, we arrest the exact same guy.
Yeah.
So the cops get to a point where they're like, why am I even doing this? So then I think, and I don't even hate them for this, cause I can kinda can understand where they're coming from. Like, they're like, why am I putting myself into danger? Trying to protect people when I, even if I arrest this guy, he's gonna be let back out on the street. They won't lock him up.
Or people give them shit for their job.
Correct.
And they're just being demonized, which I've always been never on the side of either or. I'm more of tell people. This is what I think about cops, man. One, I think there's some bad ones and I think there's some good ones. I think that, uh, their higher ups are very demanding, have unrealistic demands of them, whether it be, um. Kind of the financial side of it where they want, you know, certain amount of tickets and revenue at some point at the end of the month. Um, they want them to be involved in every fucking thing, like when they should be out there actually solving real crimes. I think that society relies on them way too much. I think when it comes to defense, you should be. Relying on self-defense before you're calling anybody else in, like we should, you should be doing that, like. You should be taking care of yourself, being situationally aware. And to be honest with you, I mean, cops, you know, they're not there when the crime happens. You're usually there after. So I don't know why we rely on cops for so much or put some unrealistic expectation on what they should be doing.
They'll tell you that themselves, actually. When I was getting death threats, man, I had cops check in on me and they're like, we're watching, like, we know what's happening.
Yeah, but we can't be there twenty-four seven.
They che- they asked me like point blank, like, are you like packing? Like, are you safe? Are you secure in your own home? And I'm like, yeah, I am.
Which is why I'm against gun control laws, man. It's like, they wanna act as if this is some end fix all, end all be all. And especially these politicians that live in fucking safer communities.
With armed bodyguards.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. And then, and people haven't even looked at the past. Do you know that gun control laws was like a huge like. Hurt on minority communities back in the day? I mean, uh, they had Malcolm X, uh, I think spoke about that, about guns and stuff.
Are you saying that it's like drug laws where it was used to persecute people of color essentially?
Well, that are just not letting minorities obtain weapons.
Oh, okay.
You know, um, I think it affects, uh, I think gun laws will affect people of lower income. People that can't afford maybe to get these licensing or training that they want requirements of it. Uh, that's why I've always been kinda, uh, for constitutional carry. Because I mean, in my mind, I honestly think an armed society is a polite society. I think if everyone is, can, uh, have the access to guns. Cause I think a majority of people are good people. They just want a gun to protect themselves or sport or hunting or whatever it is. It's the smaller percent that are actually committing these crimes. And, uh, I was looking at statistics before, I think it was. Yearly nationwide, it was like thirty, I have it written down here. It's like thirty to forty thousand, uh, gun deaths yearly. I can't remember what year this was, which was like point zero one percent of the US population and sixty-seven percent of that was suicides.
Oh damn.
Yeah, over half. Nobody talks about this. Dude, I tell everyone, if you wanna follow somebody on the gun debate, cause I'm not the one that's gonna know everything. Coleion Noir is like amazing at breaking stuff down.
Who's up?
Uh, he's been on Rogan, uh, he's a lawyer, um, real big, like two A advocate. He has his own YouTube channel. Look him up, Coleion Noir. And it's crazy how he kinda gets slept on. And the reason is, is cause a lot of people won't debate him. You wanna know why? Cause he's an African American pro gun owner. So they fucking dodge him the most they can, dude. He was just talking about how that.
I have seen that guy. Now that you say that.
He always has the hat on all the time, yeah. And they talked about like David Ha- I think his name is David Hogg or something like that. The kid that was.
He was in the, um, he was in the, uh, Parkland.
Yep.
His dad's an FBI agent.
Oh, is he?
Yeah.
So that's how he kinda probably got his little rise to fame. Uh, well, he's actually gonna debate Spike Cohen, who's a libertarian, which I'm very excited about. I'm a big, big supporter of Spike Cohen. But he has dodged fucking Coleion Noir, I think he said multiple times because they find out who he is. And they're like, oh shit, you know, I only wanna debate another white guy on this topic. And then, which I find fucking racist, that shit. You know what I mean? Like you're literally don't wanna debate him because he's an African American supporter of the, the, uh, for guns. And then he says he's ha- has had multiple times to where like he'll have some type of person who is. Against gun ownership or wanting to have gun control laws. And he will be actually ready to speak, you know, via whatever they use Skype or whatever, you know? And he'll be on there waiting, getting ready to debate this guy and they'll call him, they'll be like, hey, uh, we had some issues, you know, but we'll have to reschedule or. We won't, we're not gonna do this anymore. How insane is that, dude? I mean, cherry picking, you know?
So I got one thing that popped up into my head about gun control, like recently that just, I don't know, it just dawned on me. It's like, I always hear. Uh, like police officers, for example, like will be like, oh, I don't even worry about gun control, cause like, we're not gonna confiscate weapons, like we're not gonna go door to door.
I would hope not, dude, but when you start threatening people's jobs, people change their mind.
Guess what happens, dude? I, this dawned on me the other day. You can ban, I could ban guns, the registered ones without knocking on anyone's door.
Yeah, you just make it a felony and then if any, if you get caught with it.
Easier than that. Okay, if I'm like, all the guns I own are registered, right?
Yeah.
So they know what I have. So the government could literally.
We don't have a registration. We just have a background checked on the guns. I guess, I guess in a sense it's a registry.
We do FFL, like, right?
No, like when you buy, when you purchase a gun, yeah, you're gonna have to get a background requirement. I don't know if the serial number of the gun is on that. It may be.
Dude, so.
But I know we don't, you used to have to go and register them, like the sheriff's department or some shit.
They want gun registration. They want that.
Which is insane.
Okay, but if theoretically speaking, this is just theoretical, like if the wrong people got into power, like if. A certain group controlled Congress, presidency, the courts, everything, and they wanted to ban guns.
Yeah.
They could just literally, and if they know what you have, they could shut off your utilities, shut off your phone.
What's it called? A universal gun log or something like that?
If you have an electric car, like they can just, they could starve you to death.
Yeah, and it goes back to your point of when, with those businesses with the whole pride sticker stuff. It's like, you're gonna blacklist those businesses. Because they may not wanna participate, not maybe because they don't support it, or maybe some don't, but they just don't want their businesses affected by it.
You wanna hear something interesting? I forgot to mention, the reason I fought that. Was there were three businesses that were being targeted by it, that they knew weren't gonna sign the agreement. And, uh, North Kansas City has this thing called the Equity and Inclusion Committee. And a couple of the people on there, I wouldn't call them friends of mine, but they're people that like I have an open dialogue with. They told me specifically, like off camera privately, like, yeah, we're doing this. To target that business, that business, that business. Those three businesses, no longer, they're out of business. They already left town.
That's insane, man.
So you were talking about like, people are scared into silence. It even goes to the COVID. When I was voting on mask orders, I kept voting no on mask orders. And there were businesses contacting me. Huge, some of the bus- biggest businesses in North Town that provide massive amounts of revenue and tax revenue for the city. And I would get calls from these people and they would say, we just wanna thank you for voting no. And I'm like, I, like, I was outvoted seven to one. I lost, like, why are you think, I'm like, you need to be calling the people voting yes.
Why didn't they give the people that vote? Why was it just a vote between you eight or whatever?
So people, peo- I don't know if it's, I don't think it's stupidity. I think it's done intentionally, but people think we live in a democracy and we don't. You elect people to represent you and then they vote. You don't, if we actually lived in a democracy. Then we would vote, individuals would actually vote.
Yeah.
Which, you know, if, if everyone had some type of a ID or number that was assigned to them and then online. You know, once a month or something, there would just be like a list of things that we all voted on directly and you didn't have, that would be.
Why don't they make it easier like that?
You know what's interesting about that though? If you think about it, I can, I can make an argument against it. Go to Walmart and just look at the people around you.
Yeah.
Do you want those motherfuckers?
Dude, I, I go, I go back and forth on that. I was just talking to a guy the other day and he had the same opinion as me. Cause he is for, he doesn't believe everyone should be allowed to vote. It, it just ki- I go back and forth on it. I kinda believe that too, like you said, walking into Walmart, looking around. You know, a lot of them could be bought for their votes.
Well, bro, you got somebody that's four hundred pounds, smokes two packs of cigarettes. They can't even make good decisions for themselves. You want them making decision to affect your kids?
No, I know, dude. And that, that, but then that's hard part to preach freedom and then say some of you can't vote. You know what I'm saying? So it's just, that's where I battle with myself.
Who decides who can and who can't vote?
Yeah, cause what if they think I'm not morally fit to vote because of my opinions or the way I live my life?
I do though, think that you should have to physically vote and like with a paper ballot. Cause the whole electronic system, that freaks me out.
Yeah, could be manipulated.
There's a quote from a guy, I wanna say it was in the Soviet Union, that said something along the lines of, I don't care who votes, I care who counts the votes. Cause once you get electronic and you can't trace.
Yeah.
The ballots, like if there was some type of even blockchain system or something that was like, where everyone could see it in real time tallied. I just don't tru- like, I don't trust the current system. I really don't, not after what I've seen.
I don't blame you, man, you know, and I, I really don't, I don't know if fixing, and that, a lot of people don't vote in general. I mean, what was it? It was like a very small percentage of people who don't, who don't vote.
Bro, if somebody is that unconcerned and uneducated, they shouldn't vote.
I think my thing is, is why I stopped voting is I just felt like it didn't count. I felt like it didn't matter, you know? I've had some change of heart on that, especially locally, but. I don't know, man. And then look at some of the people that we're having to vote for. It's like you're having to pick the lesser of two eagles, you know?
On a national level, I definitely feel lesser of two evils. I will tell you that, you know who said, used to say this and it never, uh. Registered with me, it was Alex Jones, of all people, used to talk about how, this was like twenty years ago. He would be talking about like Agenda twenty-one and all this stuff and, um. The UN and all these like global organizations. And he would talk about, he's like, these are not the people that are gonna fuck you over. It's your local government. He's like, they're basically broadcasting orders and blueprints down for the local governments. So like that climate agenda that North Kansas City signed, that I read, that was like racist and insane, is eighty pages long. We didn't write that, city didn't write that. They come from these like upper level think tanks. But the people that are actually enacting the laws that really fuck you are on the local level. They're your, they're your neighbors. And you can go talk to them at city council meetings.
For me, just federal money?
No, I generally believe that they believe in what they're doing. I believe that they think that we're gonna die of global warming. They really do genuinely believe that. They've been brainwashed. So also I think that's why people are so obsessed with your kids. They're not trying to brainwash baby boomers. Baby boomers are almost dead. They want your kids.
Yeah.
Cause.
Manipulate the youth, yeah.
Because if they can brainwash my kids and your kids, then they control the future. The, like the present is already kinda decided.
But what's the incentive for them in the future of that? That's what I don't understand. Like what do they get out of that?
Control. I think that they're, they're going from a centralized control system. To where they'll, they'll, I think they'll control everything, like we won't own property, you won't own a vehicle. Um, it's all under.
Which makes, which makes sense why they're attacking guns right now. They don't want you to defend yourself.
Defensive, defend yourself, yeah.
And that's what scares me, man. Uh, uh, that's one thing that really scares me, dude. And, and you know what else is worrying to me? It's like. They think as if like somehow mass shooters are the problem, as in like these guys that are running into schools and shit like that. Have, have you been to the east side of Kansas City where you see a shooting almost every fucking night over there? Like. You know, they said a vast percentage of those gun deaths that happen yearly are, are the homicides, they are from. Uh, gang related and drug related. So where are the issues? But, but if you say that, you're racist.
Most of the time they aren't just shooting random people. It's like somebody.
Very small percentage. And, and don't get wrong, that, that is a horrible fucking thing.
Like the kid at the, the lady at the died at the parade, for example. Like that's horri- like just an innocent random person.
And what was that? That was, dude, I already said it on a couple of podcasts ago, dude. Street shit. You had two individuals that looked at each other wrong.
Yeah, looked at each other funny.
What the fu- and two stolen guns?
I can explain that actually. It's, uh, there's data out there that explains all this stuff, but if you touch it, you're racist.
Oh, I know.
So people generally speaking, cause there's always exceptions, but like you can look at FBI crime statistics on shootings. And then look at it like by race and then you can also.
Yeah, I did. I looked at, I looked at Kansas City's, man. Yeah, yeah. You, you, you see where the shootings are, who the shootings are happening with. But like you said, if you say that, somehow you're being insensitive and racist towards that group.
A lot of it, but the under, one of the underlying factor, Harrison Butker, the Chiefs kicker just got shit on this week by the media. Cause he said that like kids don't have dads at home. And there's another, the, you know, this isn't me saying this, there's actual data that you can look up from the government. Where you can look up like IQ scores and test scores and education levels.
Or like single parent homes to.
The more educated you are and the higher your IQ is, you have problem solving and critical thinking. So if you and I have a disagreement, right? Like if I'm playing golf with my buddy and we're arguing about politics. And we're both intelligent people, we can like argue with each other and be cool with each other and not shoot each other. But if you're a low IQ individual, they're like caveman fucking brain.
Yeah.
To where it's like, oh, you, you disagree with me, I'm gonna kill you now. That's how they problem solve with violence.
Like a primal instinct.
Instead of talking, debating, being able to empathize with like, oh, I can see that from your perspective. I can see you, I disagree with you, but I see why you think that way.
Well, I also think, uh, not having an outlet for aggression, you know, sports. Uh, being involved in some type of hobby to release that energy, man. That's why I've always been a, I, I spoke many times on here saying, I think martial arts should be something. Everybody does, because you will see afterwards, once you train, how much you feel, um, lighter.
Dude, it scares me. Martial arts freaks me out. I'm not, yeah, like, the, the, like, the thought of like being pinned or like. Getting hit by some dude, like one of my kids was going to a boxing gym for a while, freaks me out, dude. Like even, even with gloves on, like I'm not a violent person.
I think a lot of people should do it, man. I, I think especially youth wise, I think they should do it because I think just a lot of young, young boys, man. I mean, if they don't have a way to release that aggression and they're surrounded, dude, I've been around guys like that, man. I was young once, dude. I was a fucking kid. Doing stupid shit, man. And I was around other guys doing stupid shit, you know? It's like, like we said, that mob mentality is real, because when I was around those people, I thought the same way. I fought with myself all the time, cause I just wanted to fit in. I wanted to be a part of this, you know, this was my friends. That can get you at a point to where you're gonna do something stupid, you know what I mean? Cause you're not thinking and I grew up. I grew up in a fucking two parent home and I still made bad decisions like that.
I can't relate in the violent aspect of it. I was always, I was a debater in school, even going back to middle school, I was actually. They had this thing called the peer mediation and they made me the first peer mediator in the middle school. Uh, cause I was able to, I can sit at a table with two people that are arguing and be like.
The mediator.
You tell your perspective and you shut up. Now you shut up and you say your perspective.
Yeah.
And then you try to find some type of common ground and agree to like move forward, like, okay, moving forward, how can we? Live together side by side.
Some people aren't like that, man. And then you have a shooting that will have another Chiefs parade, man.
It's literally your brain. Like I think that's the key to it is like education. Uh, intelligence, like if you can raise people's intelligence level somehow, it's much easier said than done, believe me. But most of these shootings are happening, if you go interview the person that did the shooting, they're not exactly rocket scientists.
Yeah.
Like they're, they're dumbasses. They're stupid, literally so stupid that they think that shooting somebody is the resolution to their grievance.
You don't feel like sometimes they just maybe lost individuals with no, like raised in a home of just, you know, poor homes.
Obviously, yeah, I mean, yeah.
Yeah. Which I guess could, which would reflect, you know. How smart they are, you know, because they weren't given the opportunities to get that education or. To be around people that were trying to bring them up in a positive.
The one shooting that to this day makes absolutely no sense to me, that I have no idea what the fuck happened was, uh, that Las Vegas.
Oh, the dude in the hotel that just shot down from the.
What was that?
I don't know, man. There's a whole bunch of conspiracies on that, that there was, there was multiple people involved, not just one guy. That how the fuck did he get all those guns and ammunition up there? Uh, he was like some dude, he owned like, uh, or he had an FFL dealer license. Uh, he was like some dude, he owned like uh, or he had an FFL dealer license or some shit or. I don't know, it's been a while since I looked at that, but.
That was the weirdest thing. Like I have no idea what happened with that.
That's why I say dude, you're never gonna be able to nerf society. It's fucking, you're gonna have to deal with. If you're gonna have this many people, this is shit that may come out. There may be some crazy fucking people, alright? But you saying that there's, if you created more laws that that person would have never have gotten those many guns, I find bullshit. What do we do with prohibition happen? We fucking told everyone you couldn't have alcohol. What did that create? You had mafias fucking banking off that shit. Yeah. You had people still fucking drinking in speakeasies. What are we doing? What are we dealing with right now with drugs? You know, we're fucking banning the shit out of all these. How many people were in jail for years for fucking weed and now it's just like, oh, it's cool now. We're, you're good. We say it's good, so now you're okay, guys, you know, even though there's still people in jail for fucking, you know, weed possession. We didn't, we don't see any positive effects from it. All we see is cartels created and, you know, more violence. And honestly, you're affecting the minority communities, cause where's all that shit coming from, you know? It's coming, it's coming from down there and moving up, you know? They're the ones getting arrested because of something you're saying. Hey, this should be illegal and we should put more laws on it, you know? The same thing with guns, it can, it's gonna happen with guns. We're gonna put more laws, we're gonna put, you know, this and that. And more people are gonna get arrested.
They'll still be able to buy guns, just black market, just off market.
Exactly. That's what I'm saying.
Even drugs are scary now. Like when I was in high school, it was like safe to do drug, like it sounds crazy to say, but like. You could do drugs and not worry about dying, but like the.
Well, yeah, the fentanyl shit's fucking wild right now.
Oh my god.
Yeah. And I go back and forth on making all drugs legal, cause you know, my libertarian mindset's like just fucking make it all legal. Or at least not, don't criminally charge people for possessing it.
Ron Paul wanted the, he's like legalize heroin. It's your, it's your body, you know?
Well, I think people are gonna put it in their bodies regardless. Do I, maybe laws make it harder to obtain, but. I don't know, maybe the people I grew up with, it just seems easy, cause I, I, no one has an issue getting drugs, people I know, so.
If you think about it though, like if Ron Paul, like I can see his point, cause if you legalize heroin, it's not like there's gonna be people that are like.
Hanging.
Now that it's legal, I'm gonna start shooting up heroin.
I don't know. I think, I think there would be an influx and then I think it would taper out. Yeah. I think it would, it would rise, dip, and then stay stagnant. It's just like um. I don't know, weed right now, you know what I mean? It's like high in demand, but I think it'll start to come down and.
I saw, I know so many people on Adderall right now, it's incredible, like professionals.
Why do pharmaceutical drugs get to say, hand that shit out like candy?
Dude, I know so many like high performing, high level, like professional individuals.
Which goes back to the homeless issue. A lot of those guys were prescribed uh. Basically synthetic fucking heroin and meth and shit. Uh, pharmaceutical drugs, you know, they're getting hooked on these pills and then when they're getting taken off of them, they can't get them, so they're going to the black market to. To get their fix.
I luckily never got in, involved in pills. I actually, two of my friends are dead from pills.
Yeah.
And uh, one day, it's been a few months, I was walking my dog and like found a baggie on the ground next to my house, actually. Like literally the next property over that had five blue pills in it. And there's a website, you can look stuff up, you can like uh, describe it and it'll show you a photo and they were fake uh. Oxys. And one of my buddies that knows about that type of stuff was like, bro, that is the shit. That's like the fake shit with fentanyl in it.
Oh.
So.
That just scares me for my kids, man, that fentanyl stuff.
My dog eats, like I'll be walking him and he'll eat stuff off the ground, like you have to like watch him like a hawk, cause he'll just grab it, so.
Yeah, man. I don't know, man. There's just a lot of issues right now, dude. I don't, I don't know really how to, how we can solve all of them, man.
You and me as fathers, man, we just gotta.
Raise our kids, but as, as long as we can, cause it sounds like everyone's trying to put their hands into people's homes and tell, tell people what to do, you know? That's what worries me.
I think people need to be very careful and very aware of where you live at this point. Because there are places, like not every place is equal, is the same. You need to like research like. When you're looking at a house, like I would look at all of the data you can find on that area, like look up the who's, who's in office. In that local municipality, look up your city council people. Um, just be careful where you go.
Yeah. I, I think my biggest thing right now, and you know, I'd, I'd have people with opposing views on that wanna discuss it. But just uh, the two A rights being attacked right now, I think is just a huge deal, man. Even the AR fifteens, them trying to get those banned, I think is ridiculous. Um. Handguns play a bigger part in gun deaths right now than AR fifteens, but what's the stepping stone to get to handguns? Well, let's ban AR fifteens and then we'll make our way to handguns next. They will never say it, but they'll do it, you know? So I, I think that needs to be watched right now, cause if they, if they can start banning shit like that, it's just gonna be a snowball effect, man. At some point, you're gonna end up with a fucking can of mace and they're gonna say, this is what you can protect yourself with.
I will tell you, man, like as, as a person like myself, I'm not a violent person by any means. But owning guns ma- does make me feel safer.
Yeah, I sleep easier at night.
I sell a lot of property in bad neighborhoods. Uh, actually, a lot of my coworkers uh, send me. Deals, like I'll pay them a referral fee. Like I'll get calls from agents that are like, will you go to this neighborhood? And I'm like, sure. But I carry a gun with me when I go there. And they'll send, they're like, I don't feel safe there, you know, so I'll go. Uh, but people like myself, they're kind of a contrarian and I live um. I'm on lists, people don't, you know, some people do wanna cause violence toward me. There's second amendment people that are like, it's for hunting or it's for, no, it's not, you know, I, I literally feel like it's for my protection.
I think it's for multiple things. I think it can be for hunting, cause I hunt as well. Uh, it's for sport, you know, I like to shoot when I can. But my biggest thing is, like you said, it's for defense. That's my main thing.
Yeah, for me.
I'm not gonna sugarcoat it. I feel fucking safer when I'm out in public and I have a gun on me.
Yeah, I don't wanna give up.
Yeah. If I'm walking around with my girls, I'm gonna have a gun on me. Like I, I'm not gonna try to, just because I do martial arts, doesn't mean I'm gonna. Fucking use that as my line of defense. Like come on, man. I mean, i- is it nice to have that in certain altercations? Yeah. But that's not gonna help me if some guy runs into a fucking Walmart and shoots up the fucking place, which has happened multiple fucking times. Fucking schools, man, that scares the shit out of me. Why the fuck are we not putting, beefing up security in our schools? Putting metal detectors, something to protect these kids. What do we do for our government fucking buildings? What do we do for our courthouses? What do we do for our airports? We have fucking good security. I feel safer walking through an airport, going through a fucking metal detector and having security there than I do walking into my own daughter's school that anybody can fucking walk into.
You need to be very.
Well, actually, no, I, I take that back. They do a very good job at keeping everything locked up. I mean, you gotta go through a fucking system with the camera and all that, yeah. They have to check my ID and all that stuff, so I do give them that. I'm not gonna bash them on that, but I mean, still. I, I don't know what type of security they have. Um, from what I've heard, they do have a resource officer on, on the, on, at the school. So that's good too, but man, like if you guys wanna beef up these, like or protect these children, beef up security, man. I mean, that's what it comes down to.
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, what, what's the gun law gonna do if he just goes out and buys the fucking gun off the black market? You know what I mean? Did it stop the cheese parade shooting? No.
So you know, it's interesting, I was gonna say like about the cheese parade. I, I went down there with my friends, a group of friends and we all had our kids with us. And we were at the beginning of the parade, like down by the city market.
Where I was, yeah.
Right on. And we, so we talked like the parents about it and we were like, we're not going to Union Station, cause it's not safe down there.
Yeah, I don't go down there. I think there's too many fucking people. I, I always am skeptical and think that something's gonna happen, but that's just how my brain works. I mean, I'm the type of guy that sits in a restaurant with my back against the wall and watching the door, you know what I mean?
There was so many people down there.
Yeah, so like I, I always think like in something big like that, something can't happen. Look at that parade when that drunk driver drove through the parade. He almost hit me and my daughter, dude. Uh, cause we were up on the fence at the very beginning. Uh, anything can happen when you have a mass amount of people like that. And look, there was fucking eight hundred officers there and it still wasn't able to protect. You know, the poor lady that lost her life, man. But I mean, what would have gun control laws done? To two guys with two stolen guns?
You know, the ironic thing about gun control is like, if they did ban guns. The like goody two shoes, law abiding people would turn in their guns and the only people with guns would be the criminals.
Exactly. The whole buyback program, it baffles my mind. Who's doing that? You know, I, you gotta be out of your fucking mind, man.
I, I mean.
But that's why they want that list. That's why they wanna create that fucking list. They wanna know who has them. And if you don't turn them in, motherfucker, when we pull you over or whenever, whatever it is, you're going to fucking jail until you give it to us, you know?
That's what I think.
They don't have to come door to door.
That's what I think the goal is. Exactly. I agree with you a hundred percent.
The COINRAR calls it a universal, universal um.
Registry.
Registry, yeah, yeah. I don't know, man. I don't know what to think right now. Fucking, it's scary, man. You know, I, I think, I tried to look on the brighter side of things. I mean, you being in it though, doesn't make me feel any fucking better. I mean, with how you've spoke about, you know?
I'm, I'll be honest with you, bro, I'm blackpilled.
Yeah.
I am. I think that the, I think that as a country, we're actually being fragmented. I could see some type of civil. Not a civil war per se, but there's gonna be like civil unrest in this country. This next election scares the Jesus out of me. Cause I think that whoever wins, uh, the other side is gonna be absolutely irate.
You think it'll be civil war against people to people or civil war against people against the government?
People, people.
Yeah.
And then I also think that.
That's the sad part, we're fighting each other, man. We're fi- we're gonna fight each other?
That's, that's one reason why I'm actually leaving the, the place that I'm at now is cause I don't feel safe there. I'm on lists and I mean, if. Uh, if a certain side was upset, I could see them targeting me.
Yeah.
And then.
Especially after this podcast.
I would like, I don't think this is ever gonna happen, but I think it would be interesting if people just amicably. So like when the country was founded, we were supposed to have a very limited federal government.
Yeah.
And the states were supposed to be like very different from one another. Cause it's pretty easy to move from like Missouri to Kansas or Missouri to Illinois or something like that, but it's very difficult to like switch countries. So it'd be interesting if the states themselves. I don't think it's ever gonna happen, cause you can't put the genie back in the bottle.
Like Texas talking about being its own country?
If the federal government would allow states to be individual, like if one state, you can have an abortion. And not own guns and things of that nature. And then you have like Texas, you know, you can. You can own guns and ban abortion and then just allow people to go where you fit.
The problem is, is it changes. It fucking changes. So it may be like that for one point and then it may change whoever gets in the power of the next.
The reason it changes though, is because we have this mindset of like, we're all together, everyone's welcome, let's all blend together. And that's what I was trying to explain to my friends golfing the other day and they were laughing at me, cause they were like, you're like a segregationist or some shit, which I'm not like on a racial boundary.
You're more of a segregation of mindset.
Yeah, I'm like, how about like if you and I don't agree with one another, how about you fucking go live over there and I'll live over here? And you stay there and you vote your way and I'll stay here and I'll vote my way and we don't kill each other. How about that?
I know, but Wes, this goes back to my argument. If politicians and government didn't have the power to make. To force people to do these things, we wouldn't be, we could live amongst each other and not be fighting, right? The reason why we're fighting is because we have people in office that are making us do things, cause their people are telling them, hey, you should do this.
Yeah.
They're not thinking about everybody in that area. So what you're saying is, you want that because this is the situation we're in. They're never gonna give up their power, alright? This is how it's gonna be, so the only way to fix it is to divide. And that, that goes away of what this whole country was made for.
I know.
You know, that's the sad part. That's what pisses me off.
That goes back to the Yuri Bez- Bezmenov, what I, why I mentioned that earlier is. He claims, and this is a KGB agent, claims that they're doing this on purpose to tear the country apart. And then recently I saw that thing that was like, yeah, Chinese billionaires are funding the LGBTQ movement and they don't fund it in China. The reason they're doing it is cause they're trying to create, basically they're pushing extremes on both ends to just rip everything in half.
Yeah.
Which it could be true.
Instead of going to physical war where we're shooting at each other, let's just fuck them up, you know, mentally.
They can't defeat us militarily.
Let, let's, let's fuck them up mentally by dividing them, you know, yeah.
I even know, I have friends that are married couples that are like potentially getting divorced right now over this, over what we're talking about.
Oh, yeah.
Like it's ripping families apart, marriages apart.
Family, man, I've seen them, just because thi- this person in our family supports so and so and these people don't, I mean, it's. I mean, they're so separate now, dude, where we all used to be able to kind of come together, you know? And now it's just like, nobody even calls each other anymore, you know? No one really even does anything together.
I mean, it's recent though.
Very recent, like, yeah, probably within like uh, I wanna say from Obama's presidency up.
It seemed to me, uh. I don't know if it's directly related, but it seemed to like George Floyd, COVID.
Oh, yeah, that kinda set it off.
LGBTQ pride movement that's coming like those, I don't know if they're like a symptom. Of what's happening or if they're like the cause of the separation, but.
I think it's just trends, man. I think people hop on trends and I think access to technology, having things readily available. And it could be too, like I, I hate saying this, cause I have my own podcast, but everyone's able to hop in front of a camera now and say what they want. So it's confusing as well.
And then the rhetoric on both sides, where they talk, the way people talk about each other. Uh, using terms that are dehumanizing, where they're essentially like, you know, everything's a Nazi. If you believe this, then you're a racist. There are certain terms that, like I've been called a racist, homophobic. Everything under the sun essentially.
Podcast, I told you that they were attacking, they called them terrorists.
Once, there are certain labels that if you call me a certain name, I, like, we're done.
Yeah.
Like it's at that point, like our relationship is over at that point. So once you start casting, if you say like. Donald Trump supporters are Nazis. What you just did is told all of those people that you hate them.
Yeah.
That you want nothing to do with them. So I don't know, it's interesting, like what we're going through. I don't know if it's ever happened as a country, other than like the civil war, actually.
You think that he's gonna win?
Dude, this election, it freaks me out so bad and I study politics. Um, I've got a political science degree and I pay really close attention to politics and. For some reason, like Trump supporters seem like they're very confident, but it also seems to me that Biden doesn't even seem to be like trying. And.
Does he even know where he's at half the time though? Like dude's not there, bro.
I watched a video, actually Donald Trump posted some video that was like a cut up of, it was like a five minute long video of like Biden. Just like losing his train of thought and like, he was like, where am I? And like walking around.
Fucking sad, man. They're like pumping that dude with drugs just to keep him alive, man, and fucking coherent.
I think it's interesting though, because I think that those two candidates are very different from one another, because I think that Trump is like out of control. He's like a bull in a china cabinet, where I don't think that Trump is really controlled by any, like he's not a puppet, obviously. Cause he says stuff that people are like, shut the fuck, like even his supporters sometimes are like, dude, shut the fuck up.
Yeah.
Whereas Biden, I think that people like him in his party because he follows orders. So like the town I live in, you mentioned that guy Jesse Smith, the city council person. He's actually like the alpha that runs the town. Our mayor is a beta male.
The dude banging on the table was an alpha?
Yeah. He runs everything. The mayor is a beta male. He's one of, the mayor's one of those guys that his own wife doesn't like him. His own wife doesn't even listen to him.
In the middle?
Yeah, he's like a little fat guy. He has like, he doesn't even brush his teeth.
That dude talks so fast, man. When I was listening to that, I was like, Jesus.
But there are people who like having a beta male in charge, because they can, he'll do whatever you tell him to do.
Really?
He has no sense of leadership and so if you're a group that has some type of agenda that you're trying to. You, you can push him whatever direction you want him to go and he'll go that direction.
Yeah, just another chess piece, yeah.
So that Jesse Smith dude is funny, he's uh, he doesn't know this, but uh, he's, you know what Reddit is?
Reddit, the actual page, yeah.
Yeah, Reddit. So I'm too old for Reddit, like I, you know, I was on there briefly in my twenties and it's like, I actually knew like it was a shit hole basically. So I got off of it. Um, for some reason, one day it dawned on me, uh, cause he's like a narcissist. And I found his, he has a Reddit account. The only person I've ever seen that has his photograph on his.
He has a photograph on his Reddit account?
His face. Like his account has his face on there and he talks all kinds of shit on there, like about me and about everything.
Really?
And uh, what's interesting though is like his mindset, like he wrote this long thing one day, probably thinking that people like myself would never see it. But he told the whole story about how he's from Georgia. His wife made him move here. And he was like, I hate this place. I moved here because of my wife. I hate everything about this place.
This is all online?
Yeah. He's like, I'm gonna change everything about this town, cause I hate it.
Jesus Christ.
So then you have people like me that live in this town and I like it there.
Talk about a psycho.
And some fuckhead moves there, gets elected, just starts changing everything, turning it to shit. And I'm like, stop, like what do you do? Like if you don't like it here, like leave, go somewhere else that you do like.
Yeah.
But he, yeah, he actually wrote this long article about how my wife made me move here. I hate it here. I'm. So I'm gonna, you know, take, and so, yeah.
I wonder if that's not some type of a bot account or something.
No, it's him.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's insane, man. Yeah, that guy seemed a little fucking crazy.
loophole travel. Loophole travel, loophole travels his Reddit account because he tells people advice on how to travel for free, where you go like to. People that are selling, um, time shares and you go to like a time share meeting and pretend like you're interested in buying time shares and they'll give you a free hotel room. And his mindset, he also wrote this thing on there about how he in college was arrested for. He played golf at a golf course and it rained and he got a rain check. And then reproduce, like start photocopying a rain check and was like playing golf for free for like a long period of time. And then the golf course like had him arrested. So he's literally ripping off like a local company. And that's who runs that town. And then everyone's like, why are they changing everything? Because the guy running everything hates it here. You elected somebody that hates the town that you live in.
I always wonder how they're able to weasel their way up to a position like that, man.
He talks about that too. There's a, in his ward, there is a nursing home. There's an old lady's home. So he goes in there and schmoozes with, he brings his daughter in there and guess who votes? You talked earlier about how old, like such a small percentage of the population votes, guess who votes? Old people. So he goes in there and kisses all these old ladies ass. Oh, I'm the sweet guy. Look at my daughter, all this stuff.
I'm surprised the older generation wants to put a guy like that in there. It's weird. You think the older generation would want it to be. You know, different than what, what they're, the direction they're headed in, you know?
It is what it is, man. So I just think that as, like, I'm not gonna sit here and cry about it. I'm getting the fuck out of there, like.
That just sucks, man, because you know, you've been there for so long and then having to uproot, but.
It's all good, dude. I'm looking forward to it. Yeah, I'm gonna go to greener pastures.
Yeah, there's, there's nothing else. I mean. I don't know, man. It goes back to what I said, man. If they weren't able to get away with a lot of the shit they do. It would just help a lot of people, you know, not have to go through what you're going through right now and uproot, you know?
It is what it is. I'm okay. Yeah. I think everyone should do the same actually. Like if you live somewhere and you're not satisfied, don't, um, we, you know.
But we talked about that.
You only live once, bro. Like get out of there.
Sometimes it's hard for people, you know, it's, it's.
That's true, monetarily.
Yeah, not everybody has a, you know, good paying job. I mean, fuck, what's the average income here in Kansas City? What, fifty thousand probably?
I have no idea.
And I wait, way, may, way more than that and I'm still having a hard time. So, and we have two incomes, so. I don't know, man. Uh, leave me off with something bright, man. I mean, you brought me down a dark path and that now.
I am, yeah, man, I'm kind of.
You see anything brighter in the future, man? I mean, just any type of light, you know?
You know, sometimes, um, I was talking, I was actually listening to a Ron Paul interview the other day with, uh, he was on Tucker Carlson on X platform. Tucker got kicked off Fox and now he does like interviews and they're real interesting. Did you watch the Putin interview?
I, it was very difficult to watch. I watched about half of it, but.
Interesting. I like watching, uh, the other side of like things like that.
Yeah, different countries, vi- views on, yeah.
Interesting. So Ron Paul, who's, I don't even know how old he is now. It's like ninety years old.
He's old.
Cause I, I am like a blackpilled individual and just the other night, dude, I was listening to this and he like uplifted me because he was talking about how young people. Like he, he still goes and speaks at college campuses and stuff. And he was like, you know, young people are awake to what's happening and they're fired up. But, uh, you know about like that book, The Fourth Turning? I think Rogan's podcast, they've talked about it, like the.
I may have heard.
The strong men make weak men and the weak men make hard times and the hard time.
Men create good times, good times create weak men, weak men create hard times.
Hard times create, so I just think it's a cycle. I think we're going through a cycle right now. So people like you and I. I think it's important to, that's why I'm doing this podcast, because I'm leaving Easter eggs for my kids. When my kids are my age. Uh, hopefully things are better then, but I want our kids to be able to look back and be like, our dads, like during this dark time in history. Like our dads stood up and they weren't.
Yeah.
They were like pushing back against it.
Tried, you tried. You, you put yourself out there and you had to face everything that came with it. And unfortunately, it didn't go the way that you intended it to go, but I think it opened up your eyes. I, I think it was still a valuable lesson for you.
It did go exactly as I intended it actually. I have gigantic balls and I told people like when I was running, like I've had people ask me like, everyone has an ability. Something special about them. And my ability is, I have, I'm. Willing to say things that most people are not willing to say. Like I don't have a filter. There's, when I have a thought, it just comes out my mouth. I don't run it through a filter. And things were going on in my community that I was talking to my neighbors and everyone. Um, had feelings about certain things, but they were scared to, to voice it. So I'm like, fuck it. I'm gonna do it. I'll say it publicly. Like you're all scared. Dude, I had giant, massive businesses contacting me. To where I'm like, you need to come to a meeting and speak about why COVID masks are hurting your business. No, they wouldn't do it. They're scared. They're scared. Like, so I'm proud of myself, man. Like I have balls. I said things in a room full of people that everyone in, in the room disagreed with me. And I knew they disagreed with me and I didn't cower away like a little bitch. So, yeah, man, I got no regrets. Like people, I feel bad when people talk to me when they're like, you know, they talk to me like they're sad about what happened. I'm like, I signed up for that, man. Like I went to war against, you know, what I felt was a worthy cause and, uh. I knew what I signed up for. I don't feel bad. I'm not trying to be like a, uh, pariah, like throw a pity party for me. I don't feel bad about it. I just got to a level where I'm like, I felt like I was like slamming my head against the wall where I'm like, I'm making no impact, making no difference. All these people disagree with me. I'm getting outvoted seven to one. Time to go. Get the fuck out of here, like. Fight or flight, you know, I was fighting for a while. The fight was not happening the way I wanted it to massively outnumbered, so time to go.
The problem is though, over time, there may no, be no places to go to. Especially if the federal government keeps dabbling in, you know, the states, the way they are and at the local level.
That's kind of why I hope, I, I hope in the future that states, like. I hope that there's states that have vastly different opinions than what I have and laws that I disagree with. So that people that want to live in that environment will fucking go there and leave me alone. So I, like the, the Jesse Smith guy you talked about, I was like pounding the, the desk. Like if you hate the town you live in and you hate the governor, get the fuck out of here, dude. Go somewhere, go, go somewhere else where you belong and where maybe you agree with the laws and stuff like. I don't understand that mindset. I don't know. I wouldn't move, I would not move to an area where I hated the governor and hated all their laws and. I, I couldn't even imagine living like that, but. It is what it is.
I appreciate you coming on, man.
Thanks for having me, man. It's good to see you, bro.
No problem. I hope, you know, I wish you the best, man. You can come on anytime, you know? Um, I hope everything works out where you end up moving to. Um, I hope things get better, man. You know, I hope Ron Paul is right that, you know, there's. There's kids coming up that are seeing the bullshit, seeing the division, seeing, you know. Everything that's wrong and I hope that somehow we can fix it, but. I don't know, man. I kind of feel like you. I feel like it's just kind of a lost cause, you know, and I hope I'm wrong.
Yeah, we're gonna go through some dark times, but I think there's light at the end of the tunnel. But at this time, man, you and I just keep taking care of your kids, take care of your family.
And that's what I'm gonna try to do, man. I think what just worries me is the violence that's gonna have to happen between, that, that'll. Not even gonna have to happen, what'll be caused because of the division that's happening in our country. And that's what worries me is that what age am I gonna be? Am I gonna still be here to protect them, you know? Am I gonna be able to protect them? What if they strip me of all my fucking guns and shit, you know what I mean? Or, you know, because if I don't turn them in, what's gonna happen? Am I gonna be on some type of list? Am I gonna get arrested going to work one day and? You know, not be able to defend my family as riots and fucking shit are happening outside my home. I don't know, man. It's fucking scary, you know?
Pay attention to where, I mean, if you feel trapped where, into the location you are, that's terrible. But if you have the option to move, like pay attention to who your local sheriff is, your local laws.
Thing I need to get better at and I'm starting to do now is starting to look into my city and what's involved in that, you know? What, what are the laws like here? What are the, who is running this fucking city? You know what I mean? And maybe I won't be able to make a change, but like you said, maybe I'll try to find somewhere where I can go, you know? Which sucks because I'm gonna have to uproot my family at a place they're comfortable at already. But I gotta do what I gotta do, man, you know, to protect them, you know, because there's things that they don't see, they don't know. And it's up to me to try to figure that out, you know what I mean? As the man of the house, as the, as the protector, that's what I'm here for.
Bingo, agreed.
So, but yeah, like I said, Wes, I appreciate it. Uh, you're welcomed on anytime, man, and I wish you the best.
Thanks, brother. Thank you.